...were coming below the code requirements in support of the mod. So I think if you were to do the same thing with this project, you would find a lower demand than the code requirement.
And any rough guesses? Do a percentage drop on that? Or?
I can look into the file and get back to you on that.
Okay. I mean, the reason I ask is that as we move forward with Plan Santa Barbara, sustainability is the overarching principle for almost all the parameters in which we review projects. And on the lead calculation sheets, you lose lead points by over-parking a project. And it's either based on demand or ordinance, whichever is less. So obviously, if this project is parked for ordinance, we're going to lose points toward achieving whatever level of lead certification that this applicant is going for. So that's why I was curious, what is the demand number versus what you're proposing as ordinance parking?
I can look that up.
Okay. And then my other question, probably for Mr. Burkes, in on the first page of your applicant letter, the bottom paragraph, you know, you're describing the project as being sort of the empty nester housing for those already living in Santa Barbara. I mean, I think that's a great concept because that then frees up other housing that's currently in town that other people can use, and it also guarantees that we're not selling to somebody from outside the community or increasing, you know, commuter traffic. It's somebody that's already here. So is there anything in the conditions of approval that requires that the buyer would either live or work in the Santa Barbara-Galita vicinity? Or is that something that could be considered? I'm just, I mean, if that's the intent of this statement, I'm wondering, how do we make sure that that really happens?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bartlet, if you don't mind allowing me to respond to that.
That would be fine.
We've worked with Stephen Falsish in the past to prepare a marketing plan for the market rate units. And what we can do is continue to work with housing, as we went to on many different levels, to try to do an emphasis on the local buyer. Because I think that's a very important part of this project is the transitional buyer, somebody who's going into that transition of becoming a senior and downsizing. So focusing on the local buyer is very important for us. That's how we would do it.
Okay. And then I have one last comment. Maybe it isn't quite a question, but you'd probably be the appropriate person. The front elevator that you show in your project that I think is sort of in this split of the building, if you look at where it really comes down in relation to your parking garage below, you're going to find that your elevator pit is right in the middle of your driveway, and you're not going to have headroom. So you may want to sort of reconsider how you locate that.
Thank you. I think that's word to the wise, no doubt.
Okay. Just heads up. Thank you.
That sounds like it comes from an architect.
Commissioner Justice and then Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The one question I have, I think is more directed towards staff than anybody else. And I briefly raised this at the site visit. It has to do with noise. And we've got a noise study that prescribes a set of mitigation measures, and I'm focused on the exterior noise piece of this, which we're supposed to bring below.
City Council meeting. And if you will, please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please call the roll?
Council Agency Member Falcone, Francisco.
Here.
Horton, House, Schneider.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Chair Blue.
Here.
Okay. Employee recognition.
Item number one, employee recognition, service award pins.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. In January, we're recognizing a number of employees who are receiving service award pins, and none of them are here today, but I did want to read their names into the record. First, with five years, Louis Alvaro, who's a senior streets maintenance worker in Public Works. We have two council members who are celebrating their fifth anniversary, Councilmember Helene Schneider and Councilmember Das Williams.
Woo-hoo.
Major accomplishment.
It is. They've survived. There you go.
Keith Bazell, who's a senior engineering tech in Public Works. This is with 10 years. Lucia Corral, who's an accounting assistant down in Finance. And Paul Erland, who's a fire engineer. Gustavo Jimenez, ground maintenance worker in Parks and Rec. Brenda Messer, who's a building inspection aide in Community Development. Chris Moore, who's a meter reader in Finance. And Irma Unzuetta, who's a project planner in Community Development. With 15 years, Victor Garza, who I think you know is the parking superintendent in Public Works. With 20 years, Rebecca Bjork, our water resources manager in Public Works. Department Head Bob Pearson, the finance director. Margaret Smith, public safety dispatcher in the Police Department. Shane Starr, wastewater treatment plant operator in Public Works. And Susan Trimble, who's a public safety dispatcher in the Police Department. And then with 25 years, Bob Fragosa, who's a custodian out at the airport. And Brett Weiser, who's a water treatment plant operator in Public Works.
Good. Well, congratulations to all them, and they'll be receiving their pins in their own departments.
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Armstrong?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. We have quite a few people who would like to speak, and so if you will come up, I'll read the second person behind you so that you can get ready. Liz Anderson will be followed by Ken Locke. Is she not here? Okay, I'll put her to the back, and then we'll start over. That's fine. Ken Locke. We're fast today, aren't we? I don't know how that happens. It's okay. Ken Locke will be followed by Michael Self.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I got an interesting new angle somewhat, mind-body medicine. Not too many people understand the whole concept. What I'm claiming to have happened in my life is that I've been healed in relation to two relationships that I entered into as a child, primarily through painting and then through tennis. And based on the fact that I was healed, and now I can actually teach and heal others. And right now, I'm sorry to say that I think I've mentioned this concept before, that we're in a dark age right now, which can be basically understood as a time where there's a complete gap between the mind and body. And I'll, most likely, the school board will be meeting tonight, and I'll probably pay them a visit, do a public comment. I've been, I should get a 10-year pin, I think, for my effort. I think I'm approaching 10 years. But the, what I'm bringing to the table is being kind of the healing that needs to happen. The illness is being prolonged. It's important. I have, and what I'll be mentioning to the school board is the fact that we need to start to raise up these kids as healers, not as victims. And what I'm bringing to the table is kind of a paradigm shift. I'm hoping this is not going over your heads. Eventually, it hits something, and what I'm doing gets traction. If you put mind-body medicine in YouTube, my video is called Tennis and Mind-Body Medicine. I have to explain that currently, the likes, I'll be using the likes of Roger Federer. And I'm mentioning that he suffers from an illness in relation to the practice of mind-body medicine. And tough pill to swallow, but I hope we can do it, and thank you.
Thank you. Michael Self will be followed by Lee Mulderver.
Madam Chair and Council, thank you, and Happy New Year to you all.
Thank you.
I'm coming up on my five-year pin.
If you could pull the microphone down, right there. Perfect.
My name is Michael Self, and I'm president of Santa Barbara Safe Streets. The residents of Santa Barbara were told by your transportation manager at the December Transportation Circulation Meeting that the state and Delavina Reconfiguration Project was to go back to the Architectural Board of Review for review before council's ruling. Why has the city taken away the opportunity of the Architectural Board of Review, along with members of the public, to comment on the changes proposed by the city staff for the intersection at State and Delavina? This intersection works safely and efficiently now. We can demonstrate that the proposed traffic changes will negatively affect this intersection for all modes of transportation. The city of Santa Barbara, the state of California, and our nation are mired in deep financial problems. We request this unnecessary project be denied. We do not have the money to burn on such irrational foolishness. Please stop spending the money we don't have on projects we don't need. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Mulderver?
Oh, I'm sorry. Leave this for the public record.
Okay. Thank you. Lee Mulderver will be followed by Mickey Flax.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I am Lee Mulderver, speaking as a private citizen. Happy New Year to you all, and I'm sure I'll be seeing you next Monday at the Martin Luther King Day celebration. I want to follow up with something that Mr. Armstrong just did, where he recited the years of service for the various sitting employees. And I know because of the state financial situation, there's a temptation that we sometimes see in the news media to just say, well, the easy solution is just to whack jobs. And the jobs are people. And you met some of the people in a different mode when you were at the Carrillo Art Pavilion, and you saw some of the creative energy that some of your employees have. But just within the last 30 days, three exceptional public servants have left the city. And I know Councilman House and the mayor were with me across the street at the El Paseo when Sergeant Dave Gonzalez retired. And you could not have squeezed more admirers into that room with a crowbar, and that was on a rainy, disgusting night. The other day, at the First Methodist Church, I saw again the mayor and Councilman House and Mr. Wiley and Joan Kent, who gave wonderful remarks in tribute to Minnie Granger, who for so many years was the voice first of Santa Barbara City Hall, and then the face at Community Development and Planning. And in the interim, of course, our old friend, Bicycle Bob Casey, who also represented public safety in the very best way possible, has taken what seems to be early premature retirement. And I hope that the people out in the community and with the press, really for easy solutions to tough financial problems, realize the quality and dedication and commitment that people like Dave Gonzalez and Minnie Granger and Bob Casey and so many others bring to all aspects of city life every day as proud employees of the city. And they're worth recognizing one and all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Flax will be followed by Bonnie Donovan.
Good afternoon. I'm Mickey Flax, also speaking for myself today. And I hope that some of the city employees that we have will be able to stay here because they can afford to live here, which is what I'm talking about. Last Thursday, I went to the Planning Commission, where they were presented with the latest version of the, I don't know what it's called, but it's the Barry Burkes condos out on Outer State Street. And when he presented it, he made the following statements, Mr. Burkes did. He said, one, the last thing Santa Barbara needs is more condos, he said, just as he proceeded to propose 30 more. And he also said that, and the condos that he proposed are market rate, most of them, all but four, are market rate in the neighborhood of 1,200 to 2,000 square feet. He wants them to be retirement condos for people from Hope Ranch. Of course, he has no way to enforce that, but that's what he's proposing. In addition, he said that the motel that is there and would be destroyed as part of the new project was vacant. In fact, it is vacant now. The reason it's vacant is that as this project has gone through the process, the at-risk-for-homelessness people who were living there were evicted. Now, I'm told that they were done, it was done all according to HOIL, they were given relocation and so on. But who knows what has become of these at-risk people? So once again, as seems to have been the pattern on La Cumbre Road, an attempted pattern on Garden Street, we are seeing the eviction, the elimination, the tossing aside of poor people in favor of retirees from Hope Ranch and the like. This time, however, I believe that this kind of project, this kind of approval, is in direct contradiction to, remember this? The general plan update that we've all been working so diligently on. And it seems to me that the first step in any approval process is to make sure that it comports with the general plan. And I leave it to you to decide if this kind of project comports with the following principles. That, number one, this is the first land use principle of the update, prioritize the use of available resource capacities for additional affordable housing over all other new development. Number two, this is H11, mixed-use housing at shopping centers. Promote and encourage the development of mixed-use housing with an emphasis on affordability at shopping centers such as La Cumbre Plaza. Now, there is a specific direction that it seems to me was violated by this provision. And finally, I understand that Mr. Burkes is trying to claim community benefit for this project. The community benefit residential land use is defined by this document that you guys and the Planning Commission both thought highly enough of to send forward for environmental review, says that community benefit shall be affordable housing that provides housing affordable to low, moderate, and income families, housing dedicated for critical workforce employees, affordable housing for local workers, rental housing, transitional housing, SROs, precisely the kind of housing that is being destroyed in order to make way for the needy seniors of Hope Ranch.
Thank you.
I would urge you to follow the precepts that you have approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Donovan will be followed by Kate Smith.
Hello, Bonnie Donovan. I turned my phone off. The crisis that our country, county, state, city is in, you really need to look back at everything you guys have done. And the roundabouts, and you guys think they're so wonderful, the mini-roundabouts. How much did you have to spend when the tree got hit? You had to go get out the tree that was damaged and plant a new one. You're trying to spend money on State Street at Delavina. That is absolutely perfectly fine, and yes, there was an accident, but way down by Alamar, and that had nothing to do with the cars going down the road. The county's done a work furlough. Are you guys going to do a work furlough to the employees, which are jobs, which is stimulating the economy? Yet you want to do eight more mini-roundabouts on the West Side, correct?
No.
And you guys think there is eight more in the process?
Okay.
And you guys think that if it's a grant, that the money just falls from the sky?
No, it's taxpayer money.
It comes from taxpayers, which is either federal, state, county, et cetera, and we have to stop draining the pot.
Thank you. Kate Smith, followed by Jerry Siegel.
My name is Kate Smith. God bless America. I have a great name, don't I? Well, my doctoral dissertation is a re-articulation of Aristotelian theory of theater, which is the means by which people raise their consciousness. So I am standing before you today wearing iconic words, "we the people." You know the rest. And I am saying that I represent truth, justice, and the American way against humorless arrogance, illusory prestige, brute force, and primeval stupidity. Please visit sbschooltalk.com, because what you will learn is that the Internet has allowed the people to have a grassroots movement that will prove to be the greatest in our nation's history. The administration of education has self-aggrandized to the point that indeed, Ken Locke was talking about, there's a separation of the head of the body politic from the body itself. Our school system is corrupt. It is on the web. The first book, written by yankeeinstitute.org, is called School Corruption: Betraying Our Children and the Public Trust. The second book, written by Yankee Institute, Dr. Lewis Andrews, is called The Second American Civil War: The Public Employment Complex Versus the Taxpayer. The third issue, which has just been put online, has to do with teacher abuse. Our teachers are definitely between a rock and a hard place in that the administration is retaliating against them for standing up for our children, and the parents have nowhere else to go but to the teacher who can do nothing. The issue of my disqualification is on the web. I am in an island. It was, I was illegally disqualified, and I ask that you pay attention to the issue so that you can provide the oversight that the people need. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Siegel, and then the last speaker will be Liz Anderson.
I come before you as a T-Fire victim, and I'd like to speak to that issue. I moved, I grew up in California, I went east to go to law school, I became a Supreme Court law clerk, I was a federal prosecutor in New York. I returned to Santa Barbara five years ago, expecting to be able to sort of semi-retire and lead a peaceful and enjoyable life with my family. On November 13th, T-Fire came through and destroyed the house we moved to, which was the house designed by Paul Mills at 638 Los Alturas. Paul Mills, the former director of the Museum of Art. Excuse me. My question to you, and the reason I'm here today, is that, speaking for myself and on behalf of another, a number of my friends, we feel completely abandoned and left to defend for ourselves by the city of Santa Barbara. It started the night of the T-Fire. We evacuated with no warnings, not a policeman on our street, nobody to tell us when it was time to go. There was not a fireman there. My house burned to the ground with not a drop of water, not a fireman there to do anything. Since that time, I've had to conduct the cleanup, the demolition, the structural testing of the house entirely on my own. I have not gotten an ounce of help from the city of Santa Barbara. I understand that after the Painted K Fire, the city actually did the demo and cleanup. It conducted the structural testing, which makes sense since ultimately, they have to decide whether the house can be rebuilt and permitted. None of that has been there. I had to pay for my own demolition permit. The county made it free for those people. Why is the city of Santa Barbara charging me to get a demolition permit after they couldn't protect my house and it burned to the ground? This isn't some, you know, silly redecorating remake, oh, I want a permit because I'd like to redecorate my house. My house was destroyed. It is, it's very upsetting, and I'm sorry, I'm a little overwrought. This has destroyed my family's life. My son is in psychological counseling, and there's been nobody here doing anything for any of us. Why should I pay property taxes? What's it for? Nobody was there to help us. My property is worthless as far as I'm concerned, it's a piece of empty land. Why do I have to pay $24,000 a year in property taxes even going forward? Yes, I applied to have it abated a bit. It's just very upsetting, and a lot of us feel this way.
Thank you. No, we can't.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to indicate to the gentleman that Paul Casey's sitting in back, probably give you, connect you with a number of resources, including architects locally that are providing.
I got architects. Where was the help? I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, I didn't mean to.
And I was just saying that there are a number of city services that we did have in a drop-in center that are still available in some form or another.
I got them all.
Well, we do want to give you technical assistance, and obviously, we cannot waive all fees, and there also are interim measures. There are interim measures that we have that I hope that you would take advantage of. For instance, temporary housing that is not contingent on a building permit, unlike in the county, which you can also take advantage of.
I'm renting a place on my own, my own money.
If you need more information, I encourage you to go and talk with Paul in the back.
Well, and I also encourage you to talk with one of us, too. We cannot, we can't do any business if it's not on our agenda. I'm sure as an attorney, you understand how that works, so we can't. I'm sure as an attorney, you understand how that works, so we can't do that.
No problem. I went to the Board of Supervisors last week, and I spoke with Janet Wolf, who I know personally. She couldn't have been more lovely, but she said, "You gotta go talk to the city council."
Well, because you're in the city.
I understand.
And none of the paint fire was in the city, so I don't know where you got that information. But anyway, we would be glad to talk to you about it and try to figure out something. We're trying to help people. We're not trying to hinder them.
Please. What should I do? Should I stay here and talk with you?
No, we can't because we have a meeting right now.
Oh, I'm asking what I should do.
Oh, you can talk to Paul in the back, in the back there, and you can set up an appointment with us. He'll help you on that.
I will do that, thank you.
Paul will even raise his hand as you turn around. There, there you go. Okay, thank you. Liz Anderson.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, Happy New Year to all of you. I hope everyone had a wonderful beginning to the new year. Thank you for allowing me to pray for you and the many issues that will be discussed today. Heavenly Father, I lift up the mayor and city council members to you. I pray for your strength, wisdom, protection, peace, and patience for each individual as they listen and discuss items listed on the agenda for today. Lord, I ask that you meet their individual needs on a daily basis to prepare them to listen with clarity and understanding regarding each matter. I pray for each person sitting in this room today and ask that you give them wisdom and caution in bringing their particular concern to the city council for discussion. Dear Lord, thank you for the amazing events that will take place in the city of Santa Barbara in the year 2009, as a result of many hours of decision-making by the city council in the year 2008. Thank you for the incredible turn of events that took place in the year 2008. We look forward in anticipation to see what you will do in the year 2009. We ask you in Jesus' name to bring forth miracles and great resolutions to finalize any decisions that need to be made in the year 2009. I pray that this year would be a year that we would continually thank you in every situation facing each individual, business, or nonprofit organization. As the economy appears to be causing many to worry, please protect us individually in the city of Santa Barbara. Let our city be known as a city of hope that works together to produce results rather than staying in the problem and working against the solution. We thank you that you already know that all the details, big and small, in every single situation, the city and the residents of Santa Barbara are facing today. Father, move among us and make your presence known in all of our words and actions today. You are an amazing God that has our best interest in mind. Protect the city council members from any unexpected and unruly attitudes, actions, or behaviors in this room today. In addition, please remove every self-righteous attitude that may be here today and replace it with a willing and giving spirit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we don't have anybody else on the public comments, so consent calendar, you want to go ahead and read what you need to read by title only?
Item number four, Records Destruction for Waterfront Department. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the waterfront department and the administration division. Item number five, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan for Improvements at the William B. Cater Water Treatment Plant. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara designating the city administrator as the individual authorized to apply for the drinking water state revolving loan on behalf of the city, authorizing the city administrator to execute the DWSRF loan application and identifying the water fund as a dedicated source of funding for repayment to the DWSRF loan. Item number six, Purchase of Easements at 513 and 517 Delavina Street for the Haley-Delavina Street Bridge Replacement Project. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, accepting easements at 513 and 517 Delavina Street, accepting a quick claim interest in an adjacent portion of Mission Creek, and authorizing the public works director, subject to review and approval by the city attorney, and subject to review in advance, written approval of necessary easement purchase costs by the state of California Department of Transportation, to approve an easement purchase agreement and related documents, and which authorizes the payment of just compensation to the property owner in the amount of $160,000. Item number seven, Introduction for Lease Agreement with Agrex, including Recommendation B., that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, in ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a lease agreement between the city of Santa Barbara and Agrex located at 6150 Francis Batella Road at the Santa Barbara Municipal Airport to be effective February 1, 2009.
Okay, that was reading by title only. Without objection, we'll wait for the reading. On the consent calendar, did you want to take item 10?
Item 10, please, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Item 10 and 11, please.
Okay, and 11. Anybody else? Okay. Will you go ahead and read the item 10? We'll take that one first.
Item number 10, Energy Partnership with Southern California Edison, Addendum to 2006-2008 Agreement.
Okay. Mr. Horton.
Yes, thank you. On the first page of item 10, the, I guess the third paragraph says, "California PUC and California Energy Commission have made energy conservation a major goal of public utilities." And it goes on to say, "CPUC has directed public utilities to form energy partnerships with local governments to help achieve this goal." And my question, I think, is to Mr. Dewey. I believe we have some local partnerships that are not governmental in nature, and I was wondering if this would be a good time for you to explain that to us here and for the television audience.
Okay. Mr. Dewey.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horton, this particular partnership and all the partnerships that we're involved with right now are local government partnerships, and so that's what this is pertaining to, so I'm not quite sure what other partnerships that you're referring to.
Well, I think we're working with CEC on some examination of our policies, which I think would relate to this, so I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that. I think Mr. Davis is here as well. He may have a comment.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Davis? Let me, yeah, that's hot and still, there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. To clarify, we actually are a contractor to administer the SKEEP South Coast Energy Efficiency Partnership. And so, we're working essentially as one of your contractors to do this. And again, I was here today knowing it was going to come off the agenda to tell you that it's been a very successful program, both in terms of business retrofits, the appliance replacements, and yes, even exchanging Christmas lights. This past year, just to let you know, 1,600 Christmas lights for a little over 10,000 kilowatt-hours. And it's actually fun, and now we have, it's the third, second or third year, people are coming back saying, "When are you going to start?" Anyway, we are, in this particular case, a contractor with SKEEP, but we are also working as a community partner to you, anything from carbon neutrality to Architecture 2030 and down the line. And we do consider you basically one of the, well, no, the strongest supporter of energy-related matters in the Central Coast, if not the state.
So, there is a longer-range plan with CEC and the city?
Yeah, nothing formal. Again, we had, at your indulgence, we had presented the Fossil Free by 33 Plan. There are components within that particular vision for the future, and essentially the components are, one, being considered in Plan Santa Barbara; two, we're working through your ordinance committee to look at various ordinance amendments relative to energy efficiency, working again through the finance committee relative to the question to the cost of carbon neutrality, and we'll continue to pursue those particular matters. But we want to thank you for your involvement in SKEEP. It has basically brought Edison to the table with us to talk about using those public good funds for the good of the people of the South Coast. So, we do support the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dewey, did you have anything to add? Okay, just a minute.
Yeah, in reference to that, the CEC has been a good partner with us and has aided us in a number of areas, in some of the areas that Mr. Davis talked about, but also recently we completed retrofits of lighting systems in the gymnasiums of the Galita Boys Club and Girls Clubs, and also in carpentaria. So, the complete program that includes the direct install program for local businesses that provides up to $5,000 free retrofit dollars for, you know, things like energy-efficient lighting, over the three years, has netted 6.9 million kilowatt-hours in savings, which is the equivalent in greenhouse gas of taking about 530 cars off the road and saves about $1 million for local businesses. So, that's just one of the areas that the CEC has helped us on, that SKEEP has provided for.
Yeah, and I'm glad today to have an opportunity to talk about it a little bit because I don't think the average resident knows about it. It's kind of, I don't know why it's under the radar, but it is for some reason, but it's done some wonderful things, so it's good. Thanks. Mr. House.
Yeah, I'd also ask this to be taken off the consent calendar, just so the public would have a chance to hear about what's going on. This is a partnership, energy partnership with Southern California Edison, and in this report, it talks about the sustainability impact, says that extending the 2006 and 2008 partnership program will provide services to the community in the form of direct installations of energy conservation retrofits for local businesses, energy education and outreach programs to residences, businesses, and schools, and other energy incentive programs. And it continues our relationship and partnership with Southern California Edison. And I just wanted to sort of testify on that behalf. I don't know if it was with the county or what, but my business is located in the county, and Edison came and retrofitted my fluorescent fixtures above in my about 2,200-square-foot location, and we save close to, between $75 and $100 a month on our energy bill for my business there. And it was, it was something I, all I had to do was open my doors and ask them to, you know, and allow them to come in, and they provided even the latter. So, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to say anything else you'd like about this because we really want to appreciate this partnership with Southern California Edison.
Right. Ms. Focconi.
And I do want Mr. Dewey to have a chance to.
Mr. Dewey, not to put you on the spot at all, but when can we do this room?
Well.
Probably on a list, right?
This room has already been retrofitted with energy-efficient lighting.
Has it?
Yeah, these are high-efficiency T8 lamps with electronic ballast.
Okay, because it's just still as annoying, quite frankly, as regular fluorescents, but if they are, if they have been done, then they are, they are very bright. You can't, you cannot tell the difference. That's quite extraordinary.
Yeah, they actually use, you know, about half of the energy that the ones that were originally in there.
Excellent.
And they provide more lighting, so we could work on the annoyance factor.
No, it's, there you go. Very nicely done, Jim. Good, thank you. That would be better, quite frankly, than.
Are you looking for better skin tones from candlelight or something like that, you know?
No, don't fluorescent bulbs burn anybody else's eyes but mine, no? It does it to a lot of people, so.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think we have to vote on this separately, is what I'm sensing here. Okay, thank you. Item, thank you, Mr. Davis, for coming to. Item 11, could you read it?
Item number 11, Contract for Conceptual Design of Lower Sycamore Creek Drainage Improvements.
Okay. And this, there was a request, did you?
Yes, I'd asked to have this just taken off the consent. Again, for the same basic reason, and I'm glad Mr. Kelly's here to explain what we're up to here. This is the contract for conceptual design of lower Sycamore Creek drainage improvements, and I think the strategy that's outlined in the staff report is something worthy of public appreciation and understanding. So, I just want to give staff a chance to explain what we're doing there. Flooding, of course, has been a problem in the lower Sycamore Creek area of the east side for many, many years, and this is a coordinated effort to take advantage of the benefit of the Highway 101 improvements as well. So, maybe Mr. Kelly could take a moment and explain that to us.
Okay, Mr. Kelly.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Grant House, is that, yes, indeed, you summarized it very well, is that this neighborhood has been, was flooded twice in 1995, in January 10th and March 10th, under, you know, almost a foot of mud. And so, with the improvement that Caltrans is doing, which is almost tripling the width of the culvert underneath the freeway, the intent of this is to focus on just a conceptual hydraulic analysis so that we can be prepared to go move forward in the future with the preliminary and final designs to match that hydraulic capacity that Caltrans is having. And of course, anything that we do here will be, I have already initiated discussions with the Creek Division, as anything in the city of Santa Barbara, in a creek, will be done in coordination with the creeks and just the general Santa Barbara aesthetics of multifunctional analysis.
One other small piece, nuance, that I noticed, and I was hoping you'd take a moment to comment, has to do with our relationship with Union Pacific and their bridge, which goes across the creek adjacent to the Highway 101. And I understand that their bridge is not at the full capacity that the new highway bridge will be offering. So, what's the plan for the future with regards to Union Pacific?
Go on.
The plan there is that their bridge is not as wide as the culvert at Caltrans, however, is much higher. So, when you look at the cross-sectional area, it may look like it approximates the same flow, but as far as, you know, what really counts, which is the water level, it's not quite there. So, we're going to do some pretty detailed, or some additional hydraulic design to find out, you know, what should that width be, and then eventually work with all the appropriate agencies to look at widening that bridge. For your information, it was about, I think, eight or so years ago, the railroad came in and widened Laguna Channel. So, hopefully, we can coordinate with them to do something similar to that at this location, and then have a coordinated design all the way up and down the creek. Another side benefit of this is that with any amount of luck, if we can do it promptly enough, we hope to be able to qualify for, with any amount of luck, maybe one of these infrastructure grants. But we won't know until we get the design done and the environmental done, and this is a topic, especially at the Punta Gorda Bridge and in the Muerto Bridge, that the neighborhoods have been mentioning for many years, for many of the neighborhood meetings I've been into, within the neighborhood, especially after the El Nino rainfalls, that significant interest to improve the capacity of those bridges because they, because of their, their design or just the way they're set up in the creek, they plug up frequently and cause street flooding. And so, if we could get a clear span and a wider span to match the rest of the improvements, especially what Caltrans is finally doing, I think it will be a significant benefit to the neighborhood.
Well, on behalf of the residents there, because I've participated a lot with those folks, I just really thank you for what you're doing, because I know you're setting up a chance for us to really get this fixed once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the consent calendar. Anybody else have anything?
Move consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We are on to a report from the Finance Committee.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today at 12:30. We discussed the interim redevelopment agency financial statements, the city interim financial statements, and we started reviewing of the infrastructure financing task force recommendations, and that will be an ongoing matter, which we will be discussing in many occasions in upcoming Finance Committee meetings.
Okay, thank you. I just made a mistake. Well, I have to have made one one time in my life, right? No, I do that a lot. Mr. Pritchett had put in a slip on the Sycamore Creek Bridge. Do you want to come up, although we already voted for it? You could change our minds, we could have a reconsideration, I'll vote against it. No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Pat Kelly was so guilty, he was trying to have a conference right there on bended knee.
Thank you. I'm very sorry.
I just wanted to point out, this staff report for the lower Sycamore Creek preliminary design did not mention the good stuff we heard Pat Kelly mention, because on, just on the way it's written, this looks like it could be, you know, a trapezoidal concrete solution, which we don't like to do here. So, I just want to help encourage the public works department to look at the multifunction creek planning approach like the city's doing for lower Mission Creek, which it'll carry more water, and it'll grow more trees, and it'll host more steelhead trout, or whatever fish is there in Sycamore Creek. The, you know, as we know, in the long term, the reason flooding happens is not because the culvert under the freeway is too small, it's because urban residences are down in the floodplain, especially those trailer areas right there against the freeway. And that's, you know, decades long ago how that sort of problem ensued. But another issue for everyone to remember is the Wright Creek Bank on the western side, where all those ramshackle dwellings were sort of taken out a few years ago, that looks awfully ripe for gentrification. And perhaps if the channel is, I'm not saying that's good, but I mean, a project could excavate the channel to make it hold more water and put that material to raise that lot above the floodplain elevation, and that momentum should be watched by the city, because a lot of people moved out there probably because they should not have been there, and now who's going to move in when they get some venture capital? But anyway, it's a fine idea right now, the spending is not too high, it's merely a preliminary study to see what's possible, and Pat's always good at coordinating with the enviros in Parks Division and talking to the public. And I'll talk to you on the next creek later.
Okay, thank you. No, it's true, we've been to a lot of meetings on that, on that item, but thank you very much for keeping us, you know, aware of that. Okay, item number 16, please.
Item number 16, Resolution for an Air Service Development Incentive Program. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council. A resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, establishing an air service development incentive program to support the development of new and added non-stop destinations to air service at the Santa Barbara Airport.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. No, that's perfect, thanks, go ahead. Is that all right? Yes, I was gonna call on each of these ladies, but that's okay, go ahead. All right.
Um, I'm Cherry Gibson of the Airport Marketing and Communications Division, and I'm here to present information on the air service development incentive program as a partnership opportunity between the airport and the airlines. And just as a reminder, um, as an enterprise fund, the airport department is responsible for generating all the revenue it requires to operate and maintain its facilities and services. Federal law requires that all money earned on the airport must be spent on the airport, and no general fund dollars are used at the airport. Um, as further background information, the Santa Barbara Airport is the busiest commercial service airport on the California coast between Los Angeles and San Jose. More specifically, Santa Barbara has a sixty-three percent market share of the total daily departures for the four commercial service airports in the tri-counties. There are six major airlines serving ten non-stops from SBA. Seven of the non-stop destinations are in the top twenty-five airports in the world for passenger volume. The economic impact of the airports and its services has been estimated at more than one-half billion dollars annually. Santa Barbara has been successful in attracting passengers as an origination and destination airport of convenience to the local region. But as the airlines continue to reduce their fleets and require higher utilization of aircraft, it becomes more challenging for small communities to maintain and enhance their air service. Since SBA is in close proximity to large international airports in Southern California, this creates a challenge in maintaining a strong passenger base and therefore, major airline service. Historically, Santa Barbara has not offered monetary incentives to airlines, although it has been a common practice in the industry for several years. The airport has relied on strong marketing program to promote the airlines serving Santa Barbara based on the philosophy that air service should be able to sustain itself over the long term. However, with the well-documented struggles of the aviation industry and the current economic climate, incentives are needed to strengthen the community's competitive position for new and expanded routes. Incentive programs are designed to help offset costs during the important startup period. An airline's decision to serve a new market or expand service in an existing market represents a significant investment and financial risk. Airline route planning decisions focus on profitability. An airline incentive program is a compelling factor in the airline decision-making process when choices are presented as to where to place additional service. Market factors that influence an airline's decision to offer new air service in a community include route profitability forecast, aircraft type and availability, market competition, and the level of support an airline will see from a community. Airline route planners pay particular attention to those communities that effectively partner with carriers and maintain a business-friendly environment at their airports. With regards to the Federal Aviation Administration, their policy allows airports to establish air service incentive programs involving waivers or discounting fees and charges imposed on airlines in exchange for new air service. Due to the highly competitive nature of attracting airlines, many communities and airports in the United States offer incentives in efforts to support air service development activities. The incentives are limited to define promotional period and must be available on a nondiscriminatory basis to all airlines willing to meet the incentive program criteria. The purpose of SBA's proposed air service development incentive program is to encourage a new entrant or an incumbent airline to provide non-stop service to any destination that is not currently served from Santa Barbara. In order to be eligible for the incentive program, the airline must provide a minimum of five departures per week. And SBA's incentive program proposes a waiver of landing fees for a limited period of time not to exceed twelve consecutive months and marketing support not to exceed fifty thousand dollars per year. Landing fees are calculated on aircraft weight as a dollar ninety-eight cents per thousand pounds. For one daily departure, the typical regional jet landings at SBA would equate to approximately thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars per year. The marketing support dollars would be spent locally by the airport and not given to the airline. One flight annually should generate approximately nine thousand implaining passengers. On average, these departing passengers spend eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents per day on airline terminal concessions, including rental car parking, food and supplies. In this example, passengers would generate approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars, thus providing a net gain in airport department revenues of seventy-one thousand annually. In addition, there are tens of thousands of dollars generated in the community as significant economic impact. In conclusion, during their November meeting, the Airport Commission unanimously recommended approval of the air service development incentive program. Thank you for your attention, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Horton?
Well, just from the, um, financial side of this, you mentioned that other cities or other airports have done this kind of arrangement before. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And I wonder if you could just give me a quick overview of what those airports are and what the fee levels are, what the, um, the, the levels are of the waiver here. Can you do that for me so I get a sense of how we fit with others in California?
Uh, I do not have a complete list of the California airports that have given incentives, but normally, they do also offer the rental fees at the terminal in addition to the landing fees. Um, in terms of those California airports on the central coast and the tri-counties, I don't believe any of them have offered incentive programs as yet in terms of landing fees, but they all offer marketing support.
Okay, well, I, I'm not getting, are we in a worse position than other airports then, or, uh, can somebody help to explain this?
Yeah.
Mayor Bloom, Councilmember Horton. Uh, airports across the country, and then, uh, most of them these days have an incentive program, and it really is based on what that airport can afford or their local community. For instance, San Luis Obispo, after their recent, uh, decrease in service, their local chamber and business, uh, community got together and, uh, I don't know the amount of their, um, incentives, but they are prepared to offer incentives. Uh, we just recently read with, uh, LAX or Dallas, uh, eight million dollars, uh, for a large hub, uh, was in their incentive program. So, it's really all over the map. Uh, we felt that this was, uh, within our financial ability, and really is to give the airline just that extra little bump in, uh, considering us for service. I don't think that we could really afford to subsidize a whole, uh, airline's service.
Okay. Ms. Focconi?
Ms. Ramslough, how many, let me start out by asking, how many, this is only for non-stop flights, so either Santa Barbara is a non-stop destination or it originates from Santa Barbara and goes somewhere non-stop. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But it does apply to both the origination and the landing, or it's just landing fees?
In, in this particular case, it's just landing fees.
It's just the landing fees.
Right.
So, they're coming here from somewhere else on a non-stop?
Well, but the services originating here, say, for instance, for...
So, it is the round trip?
So, right, it's a round trip.
It is the round trip, okay. I'm just trying to get a little clarity on it. Now, that's great, 'cause we have, how many non-stops now? I mean, when I moved here many years ago, uh, we didn't have any. I mean, the only place you could get to was LA pretty much, and now you can go lots of places. There's Phoenix and Dallas. Are we losing Dallas? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Um, but Sacramento, we're gonna keep Sacramento and Seattle and Portland, and, you know, there's a lot of good places that, that we can go. But my question is, and I think it's a wonderful idea, and, and I encourage you to do it, my question is whether or not this is the time to do it. And the reason I ask that question is because we are going to be very soon, well, in, in governmental terms, soon, uh, going under construction in a, in a fairly major way for a relatively long period of time. Now, I know that your projections, which I think are fair, however, that's today. Now, going into construction and having it all disrupted, are we going to see as many implanted passengers? I mean, are the projected numbers being used, taking into consideration the fact that there are going to, there's going to be construction, disruption, and maybe not as many people availing themselves of the facility for that period of time? Has that been considered in this, in this equation?
I think really that the economy has, um, more to do with, um, whether our passengers decrease or increase. And during these economic times, I would say that our passenger count will probably, you know, decrease until the economy starts coming out of it. I don't see that the airlines really will be starting any new service until the economy starts coming around. So, this is just put in place.
And I, and I understand that, but that's a different question.
I guess not.
The question is whether or not, in your equation, when you have done your projections, into thirty-four thousand dollars given up, will yield a hundred and five thousand dollars in, in gifts and sales and what people spend money on the restaurant and so forth. In that equation, for the coming future, did you calculate in a possibility that there won't be as many implanted passengers, eight, not eighty-nine hundred passengers because of the construction? The economy's a different question.
Well, it, it's related, though, because that is what will attract new service. For right now, I don't think any airline's going to come into Santa Barbara or any, most elsewhere, and especially a small, uh, hub airport, and start new service right now. And it's because of the economy. So, this program will be in place when we start getting the uptick in the economy and things start coming back. Uh, the loss of revenue, if, if we did get service, it's landing fees that we aren't getting right now. So, it's really...
I, I understand that, yeah.
Not a loss, uh, in that regard. And our marketing funds, we would spend it anyway on promoting service, we do that with all the airlines, so, that serve our community. So, it's really to, to, from a staff's point of view, anyway, uh, just a, uh, kind of a small incentive. And I really don't see it kicking in until the economy picks up, when the airlines are looking at...
Which may or may not coincide with the end of construction.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my point.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. House?
Well, Madam Mayor, I, I tend to think this is a really good idea, and it's something that, um, puts our airport in a position not to, uh, miss an opportunity when one may come along. And also, it, uh, tends to, um, market not just the airlines, but the, um, but the, uh, the city as well. And I, um, one of the things that I appreciated, because it was a question I had had, but I, I think the answer's right in here, and it says, "Should the airline receiving the incentive program reduce the frequency of the new service, a corresponding reduction to the incentives provided to that airline, um, would be made." So, there's, and it's, it's kind of important to know that both sides are there. It's not just, um, a giveaway of some sort. Our goal is for lasting service, too. There's a chance to get something started. So, um, with that said, I, I move that we adopt, uh, this incentive program.
Who's second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor, and we have no slips for public, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, we are on item seventeen, please.
Item number seventeen, six hundred, plan amendment, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, amending the general plan designation for certain parcels located in the Milpus neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. See Ms. Wees and Mr. Casey and Mr. Lawson? You want to go ahead? I don't know. Madam Mayor, just to clarify, this will take five votes? Yes, Madam Mayor? Ms. Wees, go ahead.
I'd like to turn the staff presentation over to Peter Lawson.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. The project is for a general plan amendment at six hundred, eight hundred Milpus. The project area is bounded by Coda Street to the south, Milpus to the east, San Barbara Junior High to the west, and the north, Cannon Pudido Street. The overall zone district is, um, commercial zoning. And the proposed general amendment would, um, take a currently designated residential twelve units per acre, and as proposed, it'd be a general commerce. This would encompass twenty-five lots on the west side of Milpus, uh, between Coda and Cannon Pudido Streets. Eighteen of the lots would be commercial, are commercial right now, commercially developed, and seven lots are residentially developed. So, this slide will show, the, um, shows that, um, the area of, uh, general plan designation, um, is up against the industrial, um, general plan to the south, the major public institutional to the, uh, west, and it would pull over the general commerce that's existing right This comparison, uh, shows the current zoning and the proposed general commerce. We chose to, in the, um, boundary line here at Cannon Pudido, um, as Plan Santa Barbara, when they come forward, they'd be looking comprehensively at, uh, the entire city and looking at those discrepancies between the general plan and, uh, zoning and, uh, update the maps accordingly. So, any, um, additional general plan amendment, uh, north of Cannon Pudido will be picked up by Plan Santa Barbara. So, currently the zoning is commercial, and, uh, as everybody see, is the lots are developed as commercial. And a little bit further to the north at De La Guera, we have some residential development. Uh, have a couple of single-family dwellings, south of De La Guera, behind Milpus Motors, uh, a couple of apartment, uh, units. And then, um, off of Cannon Pudido, there is improved, um, residential condo development, and is currently working its way through, uh, ABR final review and, uh, building plan So, this next, uh, will show you a little bit about the development currently on ground around Milpus and the street scape. Um, here's Coda Street down here to the south, and mostly, uh, parcels, um, are one block deep or half a block deep and back into the junior high school. And this is at De La Guera right here. Uh, this is actually an old slide, but it shows the Chevron station prior to it being demoed. And starting from Coda, moving north, we have the market at the corner, and we generally have single-story development mix of retail and some storage. And this is looking up at the Milpus Motors, and the background is, um, what is now the demo Chevron station. Uh, behind here, you can see where the two single-family dwellings are located, those developed lots. And looking back towards Riviera, uh, here are the two apartments, uh, on the north side of De La Guera. Uh, coming up to the corner of Milpus and Cannon Pudido, again, more retail, two-story. And looking back again to Riviera for Cannon Pudido, um, we have a existing apartment building built in nineteen seventy. And, um, behind this building right here is where these, uh, two parcels are proposed to be developed with condominiums. So, basis for, uh, the designation change, um, the majority of the parcels that are seen in the previous slides are commercially developed. And one of the reasons that this came up was, uh, for commercial mixed-use condominiums, we've finally seen two proposals along this area. And under current tentative map finding, you would have to show that the commercial or mixed-use be consistent with the general plan designation. Given the fact that the general plan designation is residential, the commercial would not be found consistent with that, uh, finding. Also, uh, the general plan designation would coincide with the current C2 zoning. Uh, it is consistent with the description under the land use element for the Milpus area. Uh, there is no change in development potential, project would still have to be consistent with the commercial zoning. Plan Commission... Planning Commission did recommend approval of this general plan amendment, understanding the scope would be small, and that any discrepancies could be picked up under Plan Santa Barbara, or any tweaks could be picked up under Plan Santa Barbara. We noticed this project at four different junctures. One was prior to even going to Planning Commission, then initiation of Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission recommendation, and finally, for this hearing. I received probably about five or six phone calls, mostly about what is this project about? And most were satisfied with the explanation, did not raise any objection, and we did not receive anything in writing from anyone objecting to the project. So quickly going through the history of the development along this area, this is from the San Barbara maps, and again, coming from Coda, moving north. And you can see that historically, most of the development in this area has been commercial. And once you start getting to Ortega, these are two single-family dwellings behind Milpus. And between De La Guerra and Cannon Pardillo, two residents are now in commercial use. This residence was demoed as part of the old gas station. As far as general plan designation for the Milpus area, there hasn't been a lot of change that has occurred. The only change that occurred was in 1964, it was residential three units per acre. 1974, it went down to 12 units per acre. Shortly after that update, 1974, staff came back to council with a package of probably about 10 or 12 general plan updates. And one that they recognized was, the Milpus area, that this area that we now are presenting to you should really have been general commerce. When it was sent to Planning Commission in other parts of the city, some people did have objections to other amendment packages. And council asked for the whole package to be noticed to the public and work out some of the issues, and it never came back. So it was pulled off agenda, so here we are today. So to wrap this up, this is a description of the Milpus area and the land use element. It has developed into a solid strip of commercial activity along both sides of the street, consistent with the present zoning. Residential use exists in the area and will persist above and behind shops. Milpus is the main commercial center for the east side neighborhood, Euclidus, and other parts of the Riviera. So with that, we recommend that you approve the general plan amendment. 25 parcels to be re-designated from residential to residential 12 units per acre to general commerce. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have any slips for the public, so this is the council, Mr. Francisco, and then Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. How many of the residential units are single-family dwellings?
Mayor Bloom, Councilman Francisco, two single-family dwellings, based on looking at the records. So that'd be two. Two parcels are each developed by the single-family residents.
And if we change this designation, obviously, they're existing in a C2 zone now. Are they non-conforming currently? Or is that an allowable use?
Currently, that is a allowable use, and will continue to be an allowable use. Basically, in a commercial zone district, if you come in for a permit for just a single-family dwelling, you would then have to conform to the residential zoning standards.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
So Peter, this is more a question for Betty, because it would be unfair to ask you this question. Did this come up because the last time a development proposal was in this zone, I tried to beat the heck out of it?
No. You weren't.
I mean, are we essentially addressing a rezone to protect it from DAS?
No, I know what the question you're asking, and the answer is no. That actually is not.
Thank you.
The reason that we're doing it, Madam Mayor, there were two development proposals in this area that never came before the city council, but they were working their way through the Planning Commission. And in fact, one had even been approved where the commission had made general plan findings and such, and this was overlooked. It's quite surprising that we would have such a large frontage of properties along Milpus Street with the commercial zoning and not have the corresponding general plan as commercial. And so the staff made an error and informed the commission that it was all commercial, commercial. They approved the project. Then another project came along, and the staff looked more closely at the map, not seeing just what they thought they would see. They discovered the inconsistency. And so we have, over the course of the last year, been in communication with both of those projects. I believe Councilmember Williams, you're asking about that other rezone that was at the other end of Milpus. And so that was a related, but distinctly different problem, where the property had a split zone back to the M1 portion and so forth. So this came about because of two different development proposals that we've looked at in the last couple of years.
And so essentially, most of what's there right now is commercial, with a little bit of residential. And because you foresee that what we want to see in the future is mixed use, we want to rezone it commercial.
We'd like to have the general plan designation be commercial. It already is, yeah, zoned.
So I think that staff had a good reason to put this forward, and that the Planning Commission had a good reason to approve it, but they came to the wrong conclusion. To me, if what we want to incentivize is mixed use or residential, because we don't want all commercial there. At least, I don't want all commercial. I think we have a vast need of a lot more residential than we do commercial. And the only reason why we would be zoning it commercial is because right now, mixed use is not allowed in residential areas. Then what we really need to do is fix that. We have a such, we already have a mandatory mixed-use zone down in the waterfront. We should not be rezoning this commercial. If what we want is mixed use and we're rezoning it commercial, then we should rezone it mandatory mixed use, or keep it residential, which I actually think is better right now, because it gives the council a stronger hand in guiding whatever development proposals come forward in this area. The only reason why we would do this is if we're okay with all of it becoming commercial. And I'm not. I don't want that whole area to become commercial. I think that's not what we need. And so, you know, I'm going to vote against it. I think that this is a good area for us to have a strong hand in, rezoning it before we see what's coming before us. I'd say is not ideal, but if we're going to rezone it, we should be rezoning it into what we want to see. And I don't want to see all commercial there.
Okay, Mr. House, and then Mr. Francisco.
Well, okay, I was ready to make a motion to support this, because the zoning seems really consistent with what's there, and with our pyramid zoning. The commercial allows for housing, and housing in a mixed-use configuration, where there are the opportunities, seems to be the order, not just of the day, but the direction for the future. We have a mixed-use overlay downtown, which was essentially a direction from council to consider using our commercially zoned areas in a way that in the past had not been considered. Is that, when we talk about mixed use, I don't know that, do we have a mixed-use zoning designation? I think we use commercial as our base zoning to be able to achieve mixed use. Am I correct with that?
Yeah, Ms. Wees.
Yes, the zoning, as the map showed for the Milpus corridor, the zoning is C2 general commercial.
Right.
That allows residential, commercial, and mixed use. So the changes that Councilmember House is referring to to encourage mixed use actually applies in this zone district also.
Okay.
So the no setback requirement, and the, a few other elements of the city's mixed-use zoning standards, all of those that apply in the C2 downtown also apply here. So it is, in the city's pyramid zoning, the C2 is a mixed-use zone. Councilmember Williams mentioned the, what we used to call the funk zone. And that's a very unique and special zoning, where we were limited in the amount of residential we could do. I mean, it's a tool, but the Coastal Commission did it to discourage residential. They set a maximum on the amount of residential. So we've only seen a few projects in the waterfront funk zones since that happened, but that was a tool that the Coastal Commission came up with for that area of town. Again, I'm not sure how important this is, but I do want to, well, it is important. I want to make the clarification that this item that's before you is to bring the general plan in conformance with the zoning. And as Mr. Lawson mentioned, different Plan Santa Barbara strategies and ideas for how to manage a lower-growth future for non-residential throughout our community, and to encourage housing, that could affect, come in effect in a variety of different ways. And so I'm not sure, right now, that anyone has put a lot of emphasis on a new zone district. It probably is more likely to be different programs that allow flexibility and choice, or have incentives and greater benefit if you build the type of development that we want. We, in Plan Santa Barbara to date, haven't talked about a model of a specific land use designation change. I think that we've been fortunate to have this pyramid, where I can say to you readily, the C2 for, you know, 50 years has allowed both uses, and that this is continuing that existing zoning standard as a mixed-use.
And I make the distinction, then, in my reading here and what you're saying, that our, so what we're being proposed with today, what's being proposed today is the general plan side of the equation. And being, first of all, I agree with the ultimate goal that I just heard my colleague, Mr. Williams, say. I believe that where we're going is naturally, and the direction of things is going to be moving, continuing to move towards mixed use in this area. This only seems to me to just add a little consistency to the process that we have right now. And I see it as very innocuous, knowing the different businesses that are there in that area and seeing it over time. So at least for the purposes of discussion, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Motion, second, Mr. Francisco?
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to mention, I think it's clear now, but in response to Mr. Williams' concern, this is not a rezone that we're talking about. And so any mixed-use development that might be proposed for this area, that's perfectly legitimate. And as far as I can tell, this is more or less a bookkeeping measure, that the general plan designation is inconsistent with the reality on the ground. And that's really, it's more of a cleanup measure than anything else. It's not going to change what we can build in that area. And certainly, I think, you know, the extent of residential building in the future that's mixed use, that's going to be a policy determination that's above and beyond what we're talking about today.
Ms. Falcone, and Mr. Williams?
Thank you, yes, I'm going to be supporting the motion for the reasons that were just enunciated by Mr. Francisco and Mr. House, in that that is the, that is the, that is the direction that this is going, is a cleanup, basically. This was an inadvertent sort of lapse. There was nothing particularly special about, you know, why this was different from the rest of the area. It was practically inadvertent. And so, you know, any other argument for, it doesn't hold logic for me. The changing of the designation, it says in the report, from residential to general commerce would have little material effect on the development potential of the sites and will not result in any increased use of resources. I believe that to be a true statement. This is a general plan designation. It's not a development potential. So I will be supporting the motion.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
It does have one material difference, is whether it takes four votes or five votes on these parcels to pass a development proposal. Right now, because of the inconsistency, it takes five votes to pass most projects that would come down the pike. I actually think the consistency should be going the other way. I agree, again, with the idea of having consistency. But to me, this, creating this change in general plan designation essentially is ratifying an expansion of the commercial district into the residential district. And it's not a big deal. It's only by 12 parcels. But to me, that's kind of the wrong direction we should be moving for consistency. And so, you know, I don't think it's a great sin to vote for this or something like that. But I'm going to vote against it, because I just think that we should be getting at the fact that we don't want additional commercial, but we do want mixed use or residential, not hoping that whatever project comes forward will include residential in a commercial zone.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider?
Thank you, just a question on the two development proposals that did go through the process and then were halted. What happens to them now? If this should pass, I mean.
One of the proposals was mixed use. It was predominantly residential, but it had a small commercial component. And they have, we've made the determination that their tentative map is like held in abeyance. And so they're awaiting an action by the council. They would proceed to a final map and move forward with their mixed-use condominium project in the event that you act favor, you know, in this direction. If you don't, we were going to tell them that their map had to be nullified, because we discovered an inconsistency before.
And for the project and the Planning Commission findings and all of that, that stays, they don't have to go back to PC?
Right, we were going to handle it with an administrative memo to the file that explains this whole situation. The other project stopped moving forward, and it's just waiting to, with the market conditions and everything else, what they may come back with. They were going to be an entirely residential project. And the problem was, was that we could not approve the tentative map for an entirely residential, wait a minute.
It was mixed use.
It was mixed use also. It was mixed use also. And so, I'm sorry for that confusion. The mixed-use component, although it complied with the zoning, it too could not get approved. So they haven't moved forward at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have people who still want to talk? We have, did we have a motion, a second, on this one? I think we did.
Yeah, it's okay. I don't want to waste a lot of more time. I just think we should be doing consistency, but in the other direction, and look at this differently. Because in the future, we should be having mixed-use zones instead of having commercial zones, which we permit mixed use in.
I understand, okay. Mr. Francisco?
And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but that is in the future. And I think it's important to point out that in this case, both of the projects that are being delayed are mixed-use projects. And so it's all good.
Right.
You're saying mixed use is good?
Mixed use is good.
I've said that before.
And you're going to vote for both of them when they come, right, DAS?
We don't know that.
He's supportive of mixed use, as long as we don't make them have too much affordable housing.
I was concerned about.
As long as they have parking.
There you go. I was concerned about, well, maybe we should keep this one going. Kind of interesting. I was concerned about the houses that were there right now in the apartment building and so on, but it seems like it doesn't affect that. And I'm, so that's.
That's, they are legal, conforming uses.
Yeah, they're legal, conforming. And so I'm, I will be voting for this, because I think, you know, as long as we can keep it going and clean up some stuff, it's good. It's easier for the planners in a lot of ways. Okay, we have a motion to adopt, by reading of title only, this resolution to rezone, for an amendment to the general plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Nope. Is that a no? No. Okay, item 18, please. Thank you.
Item number 18, Mission Creek Fish Passage Agreement with the Santa Barbara County Flood Control District for the Caltrans Channel.
This is actually a very wonderful thing. We saw a little, we saw it, where did we see it? I guess at the sustainability meeting or something like that. But it's very, it's very good, so. Mr. Benson, I think you're going to be doing this. Okay, good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I am here today to talk about fish and specifically to talk about steelhead trout in Mission There they are. We have, we have observed steelhead coming up Mission Creek to spawn in each of the last five years, each year of the last five years. We have had federal agency biologists out measuring some of these fish. This one in particular was coming up Mission Creek last February, measured it 30 inches long. And they're really, really significant and large fish. Steelhead are an interesting species because they live a portion of their life in freshwater and a portion of their life in saltwater. They're, they hatch in freshwater, live there for a period of time, then swim out to the ocean during a storm event, live out in the ocean for a number of years, get a lot bigger, and then they come back up into the freshwater to spawn and to lay eggs, to keep that cycle going. The steelhead are federally listed as an endangered species. They're down to about 1% of their historic population. That's, this particular subspecies is Southern California steelhead in particular, and they're down to that 1% largely because of man-made barriers in creeks and other obstruction to their spawning and to loss of habitat. The purpose of this project going forward is to remove the largest barrier to steelhead migration on Mission Creek and improve their migration. This, in combination with two other projects I'll mention in a minute, would open up three, almost four miles of habitat, half of that being moderate to high-quality spawning habitat. We have a number of project partners that we've been working closely with who have been extremely helpful, really essential to us in moving this forward. And I wanted to acknowledge and thank a couple of people who came out today for the presentation. First, from the Santa Barbara County Flood Control District, we have Tom Fayram, who is the Deputy Public Works Director for the county, and also John Frye, who is the engineering manager for the Flood Control District. And they've been extremely helpful. I'll talk a little bit more about the Flood Control District in a minute. We've had state and federal agency representatives, both biologists, fisheries biologists and engineers, participating in this project from the California Department of Fish and Game and also the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. Another nonprofit partner we have is the Environmental Defense Center. And Brian Troutwine has been very, very active in this project. I think it spans about half of his lifetime. And Brian is an environmental analyst over at the Environmental Defense Center. And then we've had a number of other residents and citizens involved in helping to move this project forward. A couple I want to mention who are here today are, have been involved in it, not only in an individual capacity, but as representatives for the Creeks Advisory Committee, and that's Mr. Pritchett and Mr. Muldaver. And Lee Muldaver is going to be taking over as chair of that committee this month. And I wanted to thank them for being here. The project location is along Mission Creek. Let me see if I can get an arrow here. This is the watershed for Mission Creek. The creek comes down here. We have three projects. The one we're talking about today is the Caltrans Channel, which is a concrete channel here and here in two sections. And then we have another project in a, in a bridge culvert just at the upstream end of Oak Park at Talent Road and also at the Highway 192 Bridge. And both of those are minor barriers to steelhead migration. This is a major, identified as impassable barrier. That's a photo of the Caltrans Channel. As you can see, it's a, it's a trapezoidal concrete channel. It's, it's two sections, one's three tenths of a mile and one is eight tenths of a mile, so a little over a mile of concrete. And what happens is it's just too, the water moving through here, as it's designed to do, just moves too fast for the fish to swim up. And also, as you can see, when water spreads across this wide of a channel, it's not deep enough for a fish to swim up. Here you can see a little dry spot even after a rain and water's moving through the channel. In designing the fish passage project, we were looking at three primary objectives, the first being that fish can get through it, fish passage. The second being that it's not going to cause a huge maintenance headache for anyone who's going to have to maintain it after it's built. And lastly, and very important to us, was that the project did not affect flood elevations in that lower portion of the channel. That is a flood control channel, and we didn't want it to cause any, we didn't want this project to cause any additional flooding. We, we ended up testing three separate reaches of the concrete channel, and we tested five different designs. And we tested them first through computer modeling to determine how they would, how the designs would affect those three criteria. And then it was recommended to us that we actually build a flume model, an actual physical scale model of the channel. And that's a picture of it right there, so that we could, we could actually test what the velocities were, what the water levels were, and what the sediment looked like. We just recently received a final engineering report from our engineering consultants, Northwest Hydrology Consultants. And we're going to talk about those, the conclusions in that report in just a minute. Some of you may remember this photo of a design alternative. This, the first three alternatives we tested looked something like this. We took out half of the concrete channel, we dug down about four feet, and we grouted rocks into the channel to try to slow the water down, allow fish to come up, and also to concentrate the flows a little bit and get a little more depth. What we found with that, and then we had another, another design like that where we put rocks across the whole channel, what we found was it reduced the channel capacity and therefore increased the flood elevations. And so those alternatives were rejected because they did not meet the criteria we put forward. So we needed to make a different design. And this is a, this is a design that we came up with. And what you have here is, you have your, your channel. This would be a low-flow channel that goes down one side of the, of the larger channel. That low flow is designed to concentrate flows and give you depth and also slow the water enough for fish to get through. And then what we did is cut pockets out of the sidewalls here. And those are designed to be resting areas for fish. So as a fish is coming upstream here, they can, they can go into those side pockets and rest. And then lastly, you can't, you can't really see them here, you can see them better in this, in this photo, there's a little sill. It's like a speed bump at the bottom of the low-flow channel. And those were designed to create a little bit more depth at very low flows and also to slow the water just a little bit in that low-flow channel, allow the fish to get through. This is a, this is a smooth concrete design. And obviously, as we were, we were working on a design, cost was also a factor. So we, we tried to design it to come up with something that would be effective, but would be the cheapest possible design we could, we could develop. With regard to the fish passage issue, this is the way we tested it. We put, we injected dye into those pockets, and what we saw was that the water didn't move too much. We effectively slowed the water in those channels. We also did some velocity testing to confirm that, but that photograph gives a good representation of how the water moves in the channel. We, we did a sediment, sediment test where we ran the hydrograph of a 25-year storm event, which is a 2,400 CFS, or cubic feet per second storm event. And we had a scaled sediment feed rate where we, we actually put sediment into the channel to see what would happen. So you can see there were some minor, there was some minor deposition of sediment in, at those sills that I mentioned, and also in the pocket, but largely the low-flow channel cleared itself out through the storm. With regard to flood elevations, we tested flows ranging from 10 cubic feet per second, which would be a low flow, all the way up to 5,200 CFS. 5,120 CFS is the, is the estimated flood of record from 1995. And I say estimated because the gauge broke because the creek jumped its banks. And so we don't know for certain what the high level was, but that's the best estimate we had. And we tested the, the existing conditions and then the different design alternatives all the way up to that flood event. And what, what the modeling revealed was that there was no reduction in channel capacity with the new design, with the side pockets design. These are the, the direct quotes out of the engineering report and their conclusions with regard to velocities, it says adequate velocity reductions. And also with regard to flood elevations, it says the side pockets alternatives will not adversely impact channel capacity. And then as to sediment, it says there would be some sediment accumulation, but maintenance would be minor and infrequent. So what is before the council today is, is a use agreement. This is the next step for us. We have to, the city has to enter into an agreement with the property owner, who is the Flood Control District. The basic agreement says that in exchange for allowing the city to construct the project on their facility, the city will agree to maintain that modified portion of the channel. And that is, what we're looking at is something very focused on sedimentation and repair to the project itself, not to take over maintenance and responsibility for the entire channel. Our staff recommendation is to authorize the city administrator to negotiate and execute an agreement with the Flood Control District to modify the Caltrans Channel to make it possible for steelhead trout passage. That recommendation was supported both by the Creeks Advisory Committee and the council's Sustainability Committee. I wanted to talk just briefly about funding. These are the numbers for the model testing. As you can see, with the, with the whole of this project, but particularly with the model testing, we've been very successful in grant solicitation. The California Department of Fish and Game made a, or provided a grant for the modeling. There was also a private foundation grant through the Environmental Defense Center and the Annenberg Foundation. The Measure B contribution for this project was just under $14,000. We're moving into preliminary and final design for the project. We have already a grant from the Annenberg Foundation through the Environmental Defense Center for $135,000. We have some money in our existing capital budget for the Creeks Division, and we have a grant pending right now before the Department of Fish and Game for $500,000, which would go to both preliminary and final design. And so with your approval along the way, of course, our next steps are to go forward and complete negotiations of the agreement and then move into preliminary design, environmental review, our final design, and then ultimately to construction. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Can you show a video? Is that what?
I can, I can try. I don't know if I can get there. They, we couldn't get the link, we couldn't get the link set up.
Okay, that's fine. We can imagine a fish swimming.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Well, while you think about it or work on it, we will go ahead and ask some questions here. There's, oh yes, we do have speaker's lips, thank you. Boy, my mind today is on the inauguration or something. We have Lee Muldaver who'd like to speak, come on up, Lee, and then David Pritchett, and then Brian Troutwine. Good, thanks. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Lee Muldaver, representing your Creeks Advisory Committee. As you can tell from the staff presentation, this is a project that the city set as a goal several years ago to try to establish passage for the steelhead upstream without in any way reducing the protection to residents and businesses downstream in heavy floods. And the committee's been briefed extensively by your staff and by the consultants who were retained. We had a very extensive discussion at our last meeting, and the Creeks Committee voted unanimously to support the staff recommendation to the council to authorize the administrator to enter into and complete negotiations with the county flood control so we can take this project to the next step. And we think it's a really good balance between improving the creek for the steelhead, but maintaining quality protection for all the homes and businesses within. And we think it's the kind of agreement that our partners will be able to get behind. And I also wanted to single out Brian Troutwine because ever since he was a private citizen in school, this has been a dream that he's been pursuing with persistence and determination. And every time we move one step closer, I think we should recognize that it's people with vision and determination in the private sector as well as the public sector who keep the eyes on, on the prize. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pritchett, followed by Mr. Troutwine.
Hello again, different watershed. I'm David Pritchett, founding member of the Creeks Committee for nearly six years, among other affiliations about Mission Creek. If you need help with video, I can revise on that, on how to get your files to work. In 2005, a statewide group called the Salmonid Restoration Federation had their statewide conference in Santa Barbara with about 300 people. For many of them, it was off the edge of the wor, the edge of the earth, coming this far south in the salmon and steelhead universe in California. But the opportunities for Mission Creek were a central theme of this conference. And of course, that got momentum going about the planning possibilities, and everyone left thousands of dollars of bed tax per person when they visited, or maybe it was the Tour of California that same weekend. But this has been going along incrementally. And the action before you today is an administrative wonk festival in that it's just this inter-agency maintenance agreement about, you know, how you drive the tractor in and who pays for what. But it's one of many steps for this project. And I'd like to remind the staff and remind everybody that Mission Creek in Santa Barbara, of course, is one of our big assets. Getting endangered steelhead trout to swim through the flood control channel is just a small part of all the opportunity for Mission Creek. And I hope the Creeks Division can keep moving that along to make it a greener, bluer, linear asset to the city where people can go on the bridges or at other lookouts and see a natural habitat with fish now and then. And, you know, in 20 years, the fish population will come back, people can catch them and then leave more bed tax in Santa Barbara on their weekend trip. But it's a good step. I'm glad to see it getting this far. And what you should also know is it's a critical administrative step to be really competitive for money to build this thing and to design it and do the rest for Mission Creek. I've spoken with the agencies that sort of pay for these things when the state starts spending money again, and it's, it's a sexy hurdle on the list of things. Now that we've sold everybody that real, live steelhead are here, when people look for them, even in a poor rainfall year like last year, they've, they've been out, I think, five out of seven years for the recent history. So it's a, like the tradition of the Creeks program, the city makes an investment for some kind of critical step to be really competitive for the, the bigger grants later to build something. And this isn't the end, it's just a little step on the way. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Troutwine, representing the Environmental Defense Center, I want to thank you for all your help on this one.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Brian Troutwine with the Environmental Defense Center. EDC is the city's nonprofit partner in this exciting project. It's an excellent project, really. It stands to benefit current and future city residents for many years to come. The project has benefited from a lot of grant funding. We've been very successful. And EDC remains committed to working with your capable staff to pursuing additional grants and seeing this project through to completion in the near future. And we look forward to one day when all city residents can go down to Mission Creek and see steelheads spawning right here in the city. It'll be a very exciting day when that does occur. It has a priceless value to city residents, this project and steelhead in our creeks. So with that, EDC supports your staff recommendation for the city council to enter into an agreement with the county flood control district regarding maintenance and access to the channel for the purposes of constructing this project. And if you have any questions about EDC's role in this project, I'm certainly available to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Been a great deal of help. Does anybody from the county flood control, do you want to come up and talk? You just shared all the good news, now you're going to give us, no. More good news, there you go.
More good news.
That works, aye.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I, I'm available for any, any question.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm available for any questions, but I would just like to say that we're pleased to be partners in this project. We've been working with the city for years on it. We appreciate the city staff and EDC taking the lead on securing funding and pursuing this. There's only so many things that we can do, and we've been working on other steelhead passage projects around the south coast as well, and so we appreciate the assistance and the leadership of the city. Appreciate working with Mr. Benson over what seems like years now, and our staff has gone up to the flume. Unfortunately, I wasn't one of those, but Mr. Fry did, and so we've been a partner in this. And I think it's also important for all the residents to note that the key objective is to meet not only the fish passage, but the retention of the flood control benefits, and that was everybody's goal, and we've achieved that, and we're just happy to be a part of the project. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much for coming, too. Okay, it's to the council, Ms. Schneider, and then go down.
Thank you, this came to the Sustainability Committee last month, and it's just so simple, you know, after all the different ideas going around and putting boulders in and taking out half, and here's just a very simple, small channel with little rest stops for the fish. And it seemed to be the best one in terms of maintenance, in terms of effectiveness, in terms of flood control. So, how exciting, and thank you very much. And I know, Mr. Benson, you were still at EDC when this started, and now you've moved over here, so I want to appreciate your work on this, as well as EDC, and thank you very much to the flood control district. As was mentioned earlier, I think this is one important but small piece of a much larger watershed issue when it comes to Mission Creek, and especially downstream, to look at the flood control project there. And from what I understand, after, you know, talking with representatives from Boxer and Feinstein's office, when we look at the bigger projects dealing with flood control, the more inter-jurisdictional partnerships we can create, and more issues that we can cover on, from one part of the creek to the next, the better off we are in terms of getting funding, necessary funding for different parts of the project all throughout the channel, all throughout the watershed. And so this is one, as was mentioned, sexy part of it, and it's just, it's just very exciting, because you can get steelhead trout up to Bath and Ortega, but that doesn't really help the life cycle of the steelhead trout, and we really need to get them up to the higher parts of the creek. So I'm very excited about this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And Mr. Francisco.
I just wanted to indicate that this, that this project and the, as well as the expansion of the estuary at Arroyo Burro have given us statewide notoriety, especially with National Marine Fisheries Service and all the agencies that they deal with. They featured us in a video because of this, because we're the only, essentially, one of the few agencies that is undertaking projects like this voluntarily. And there is great benefits to doing so voluntarily. First of all, you qualify for grant funds when you do it voluntarily. We are also, of course, a member of a joint powers agency that is required to do it not voluntarily, and so it helps when we're dealing with National Marine Fisheries Service and the State Water Board, because it lends credibility to the fact that we honestly want to help restore steelhead, the fact that we are doing it voluntarily, voluntarily within our own watersheds. I think it also really helps with people over the hill who feel like the San Andres watershed is something that we, well, we only want to do restoration there. Well, no, in fact, we're doing it in our own backyard and finding funds to do that. So there is enormous regional and statewide significance to doing this project, and we want that to come back around, and in fact, COME, which were one of the main agencies of Ketchumah Operations Management Board, is working with the Creeks Division at this point to look at the projects in the upper watershed of Mission, because we have to repair part of the south coast conduit that crosses Mission Creek, and we are likely to be required, I'm wearing my COME hat right now, to do environmental mitigation for that. And the fish passage project would be ideal mitigation, in which case we would get, you know, at least partially paid for by COME, the upper part of the passage project.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco.
Oh, and I also wanted to thank Mr. Fayram and Mr. Fry for coming here and for working with the city on this.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a, oh, I want to preface this by saying, I'm very much in favor of helping the steelhead trout to lead healthy and more productive lives, so this is.
That's good.
But I did have some questions. I had some questions for Mr. Benson earlier today, many of which he answered, one of which I didn't get an answer to, and that was, I understand your description of which funding sources would work on what part of this, but is there any possibility that general fund money would be required to go into this?
Mr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco. No, we have, we have not used any general fund money for this project, and we're not proposing to use any going forward.
Okay.
What we have done is used some of the Measure B funds, which are designated by the voters for specific uses, including creek restoration, and we've been very successful at leveraging those funds. I think to date for this project, and when I say this project, I mean the Caltrans channel portion, but also the other two portions which were in final engineering design for, we've, we've used less than 10% of the funds for the project have come from Measure B, and obviously, more than 90% have come through grant funding. And we've been very successful leveraging those Measure B dollars to make this project happen.
Okay. And the other question I had was concerning this, the modeling of the, of this smaller channel within the channel. Intuitively, it's hard for me to imagine, just looking at the amount of mud that's in the existing culvert, that that channel wouldn't fill up. And I'm just, I was just wondering, has this idea been used elsewhere? That is, has it been validated in the real world, rather than just a model?
Mr. Benson.
That's an excellent question, and the answer is, to be specific, as to has, has this design been used in a, into one-to-one model, a real-world model? No, it hasn't. This was designed specifically for this channel in Mission Creek. This is a unique situation in terms of the length of the culvert, and it'll be the longest concrete channel, I think, that anyone's ever tried to get fish through. With regard to the, the level of confidence that our engineers had in the, in the ability to flush out some of that sediment, I can tell you that the city of Galita has hired the engineer, the same engineering firm that, that we've been working with on this design, and they're building the same design out in Galita, in a, in a concrete channel out in Galita in San Jose Creek. I think that the engineers were, were impressed by the low-flow channels' ability to flush out sediments and debris. One thing I can say about, about the way the low-flow channel was designed, and some, one of the sizing, excuse me, one of the sizing issues for that design was that the width of the low-flow channel is four feet, and the wheelbase for a backhoe is slightly larger than that. And so as a, as an operational issue for design, we've got this, this side of the channel to drive a truck up, we can actually straddle that low-flow channel with a backhoe and use a bucket to clean that out. So if we did have a lot of debris buildup, we could go in and maintain it fairly easily, but it's, we're hopeful that what we're gonna see is a pattern more like, more like what you see over here, where you've just got a little bit of debris that remains. The channel's pretty good about flushing itself out after the storm. The debris moves much more easily over the smooth concrete than it does over the natural creek bed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. House, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One, I remember back when the, Councilmember Barnwell, I think, hosted a group at the Maritime Museum, where the, where, that was the first time I remember hearing about the idea of this model concept, and it's just really cool to see on the screen now what that looked like and how you actually did it. And also, how, what I think most of us had been told would be an ideal kind of situation, where you'd have the rock kind of more natural environment, if you will, in the center of the concretized channel. That actually didn't work out, and then had to go through some more changes to get to this. So I'm really, it's really interesting to sort of hear the rest of the story, you know, I guess, well, part, part of the next to the rest of the story, so we'll see how it works in real life. One of the things, just on a technical basis, I wondered about, when, I understood that when you had this kind of a trapezoidal or concretized channel, that the speed, the velocity of the water can be very damaging to the other end of it, where it goes back to natural on the lower reaches, and it doesn't seem like that's being, that was addressed here. So what, what happens when you get out of this, these stretches of concrete and go back to a natural bottom channel after the water has gone so terribly fast through this? Am I just misunderstanding the way that the hydrodynamics are, or could you take a minute and explain that? We ran into this a little bit on the, on the shortcut across, we were talking about it, near the fig tree, where there was gonna be the high-flow cut across, and the concern was about the impact of the water coming out with such tremendous velocity at such high volumes, and how that could cause possibly some damage. Is this something that was discussed, or is that, or is that just not part of this project?
Well, it's, it's outside the scope of this modeling, because to recreate exactly what happens in that transition is a, is a bit of a challenge. I don't know if, if Mr. Fayram wants to address the, the hydrology. I can tell you what happens locally on this particular channel. There is, there is a little bit of scouring at the base of the channel, there's, there are big pools where there's a transition from the concrete into a natural channel. But what also happens is that the water slows down when it hits that natural channel. There's all kinds of, there's all kinds of things to slow it down, primarily just the roughened bottom of a natural creek bed. That slows the water down, and then the backwater from that actually extends into the lower section of the channel. So you don't, you don't actually have, when you've got high flows like that, you usually don't have water pouring out of the channel and into that pool, you actually have water backing up a little bit into the channel.
Oh, I see. So then the capacity of the channel takes that up, I just, takes up the slowness, and then the volume will go back into the channel. Okay, I just, just my chance to ask the question, because I was wondering how that worked.
Well, with regard to what the low-flow channel might do and the impacts of the modification we are looking at for this channel, we will do analysis of that as we go into preliminary design. Part of, you know, part of what's open is the, is the technical details of those transitions, and how this low-flow channel will now pour into that pool, and we'll, we'll address that through the, through the engineering.
Okay, well, just two other, two other things briefly. One, this then might be a model, if this works out, for other situations like this in other communities. Is this being the first time that this particular approach has been tried? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's right. It's already been a model for Galita.
Oh, okay, that's right. Okay, well then, this question may be for Mr. Kelly, but I just, I'll put it out there. We've got two bridges that are, two or three, three bridges in the area that are gonna be worked on, or rebuilt. And I guess my concern is that with all this effort further up the creek, are we being, how are we being careful to not create new barriers below this project with the new bridges, and are they being designed in such a way to facilitate passage through those areas as well?
Hey, Mr. Kelly.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House said all the bridges maintain the existing bottom. And actually, that was part of the, the success of the Lower Mission Creek Project, is the preservation of the natural bottom.
Oh, great, okay, so these won't then follow the typical concrete across the bottom, just a flat sheet? It'll actually be natural bottom through underneath our, underneath our bridges?
Yes. Now, they're, yes, that all the new bridges, correct.
Fantastic, okay, well then, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Horton, and Mr. Falconi.
For me, this is an exciting project, and one that I support, but it's out of context for me. And I haven't never studied this kind of thing, so I need to ask a couple of questions that are simply lack of knowledge. Like, is there someplace in Canada or something that's an ideal in nature that you were striving for, where something really works good? Is this, in other words, you're, you come on here, you've got 4.86 miles, should it have been 10 miles, should it have been 15, should it have been two? It's completely, you know, did, I guess I'm trying to get a handle on, did you run out of money and this was all you could get? Or this is the best you could possibly think of? Or what, what do we have here? I don't have any sense of how that fits in the, in the, like, is there an ideal structure that you would have? Is this it? If that's not it, does it need more money? Help me a little bit.
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horton, thanks for that question. And I was trying to, I know you've seen this before, so I was trying to be as brief as possible in the presentation, not to give too much background. These, these fish have evolved under pretty, pretty crazy conditions. We, you know, a lot of Southern Californias like us, where you have these, you have very, very steep watershed, the waters are very flashy, the fish have evolved to swim around out in the ocean. When that lagoon gets breached and water starts coming out, they know that it's coming out, and they know they've got a limited window of time to try to get up into the upper watershed. The reason the upper watershed is important is, you, you have better water quality up there, not just because there's a city down below and you have runoff pollutants and so forth, but the water tends to be warmer down below, you can, you can have less oxygen. So, but more importantly, the pools in the upper watershed tend to retain water throughout the year, so the, so the eggs can hatch and the fry, and the young fish can survive there through a summer and be, be prepared to go out to sea later. So it's a different, it's a different type of fish than you would see in salmon, say, in the northwest, or even, or even different subspecies of steelhead in the northwest, who, who have evolved under different conditions. The length is, is, we're looking at the, the existing length of the creek. If we went 10 or 11 miles, we'd be up over the top of the mountains and heading down the other side. And so when we look at opening up another four miles, that gets us up, that gets us up into Rattlesnake Creek, which has some excellent habitat, and it gets us way up into Mission Creek. There are some additional barriers when we get up there. Up in Rattlesnake Creek, there is a debris basin way, way up there. There's also some natural barriers in that area where you have giant boulders. And so this, this gets us a considerable way up to the creek and to those pools that, that have potential to be there.
Well, those barriers that you mentioned, does that need to be addressed now?
We've got, what we're going, what we're looking at right now are the three main barriers that were identified in a biological study of the creek, and we may, we may or may not look to those barriers at a later date. I think we need to look at getting the fish up to the pools that are up there. It really opens up a significant amount of habitat that has not been available to them for 40 years.
Hey, Ms. Falconi.
Thank you. Well, let me start, I've got, I've got a few things here, and it, I'm incredibly supportive of this project, and I think whoever actually masterminded the engineering should be given, should be given a medal. It really, it really is, is a terrific project, and I've been in support the whole time. I've been the leader under the Creeks Committee for over seven years, and remember intimately when this all came about, and the work that's been done, and I want to thank the committee for their work, and you, Cam, and Jill, I want to mention Jill Zachary, because I've never seen anybody more brilliant at raising money and leveraging money than Jill Zachary. This woman can get grants from stones. I don't, I, it's amazing what she does. And of course, Brian Troutwine, thank you so much for your partnership in the county, because this really is a regional collaborative, and it's a, it's a terrific example. I do have one question before I sort of launch into my sort of lawyer mode, because I'm a little nervous here. It's an endangered species on a federal level, however, it appears in stores periodically, and people buy it and eat it. Where are those fish coming from? And how does that happen? This is just a curiosity thing, and I've got some actually material things I want to talk about.
That's a good question, and when I saw steelhead in the, in the, on display up in Lazy Acres, it's taken aback a little bit.
Costco, they're out there.
As, as I've mentioned, there are, there are a range of subspecies. Not all of them are endangered, some are listed as threatened. It's sort of like, people, as far as eating, are more familiar with salmon. So you have your king salmon, you have your coho salmon, you've got different... So you have your king salmon, you have your coho salmon, you've got different species of salmon. Same thing with, same thing with the steelhead.
So this is a variety of steelhead as opposed to...
And, and what we're looking at is Southern California steelhead. And the, the range for that particular species is the Santa Maria River to, to the border.
Border to Mexico.
And, and there are also, there are also farmed varieties of steelhead as well.
So when people see steelhead in the stores, they're not ours.
They're not, they better not be.
Exactly. Well, you know, it's a name. It's a little confusing. All right, so although the design is, is, is very simple, and beautiful in its simplicity, the contract agreement is anything but. This is not a simple thing to do, because it is a collaborative. So my first red flag was, well, and, and these are standard, these are standard items that appear in all contracts, but, and I have full faith in, in our city attorney and in Mr. Armstrong to cover all these bases, but I really want to say them. And that is, with the indemnification clause, it needs to be really crystal clear. My question is, who maintains it? Yes, we're going to maintain it, but is that us? Is that an independent contractor? The maintenance schedule, is it theirs? Is it ours? Do we talk about it? Do we do it ad hoc? I don't think the $15,000 yearly annual amount of money is going to be sufficient. I think it's going to be more, maybe not materially more. But when does that happen? And who, and who does it? What if we have an earthquake? We're responsible for repairs. Who fixes all the cracks in this thing? We do, according to what's written here. What if the flood jumps its banks and we get sued, or actually, the county flood control district gets sued by property owners who've been damaged by, as a cause that they say they cite this, this device as, as increasing their life, you know, their, their chances of being damaged? What happens there? What if flood control district, and I know you guys know exactly what you're doing, but what if you damage it? We're responsible for repairs. And according to paragraph four, subsection B, we, we are responsible for all of it, for all the repairs, even if the district damages the, the device. Further down in subsection D, there is the right for the district to summarily extinguish or, or get rid of the, you know, take back the, the agreement if we engage, or our agents or our, whatever, engage in incompatible uses. Well, what's going to be compatible? What's going to be incompatible? And, and these are not things that I have any doubt that are, are going to be covered. I just, I just need to say them out loud so that they really are paid very close attention to, because this is a big deal. This is going to end up being a covenant that runs with the land, which means it doesn't matter who owns it, whether we sell it, they sell it, or somebody takes it over. It's going to last forever. And so these things need to be very clear, because we all go into it with good intentions, and we all go into it, it's kind of like a, a partnership entered into by family members, you know? Doesn't always work out the way you want it to. And sometimes things, at the end, as anybody who's ever been through, you know, an end of a, of a business relationship or of a marriage knows that things can get ugly. And if we cover all our bases up front, or at least try. So words that have too much slip and slide in them make me nervous, and I see Mr. Wiley has come back to his desk. I, I'm not really asking for anything at this point, Steve. I'm just pointing it out, because my, my legal lawyer red flags are, are waving around, because this is a big deal, and there's nothing simple about it. So if you want to address it, then, then that's great. But, and I appreciate everybody's hard work.
Mr. Wiley.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, I appreciate your comments, and, and I, I can say that I, you know, think that we would share most of those concerns. You know, if I understand correctly, we're a ways yet from the actual operating agreements, an agreement...
I'm sure you are.
From where the work actually happens, and then we have a long-term relationship with the flood control district as to how the, the joint flood control channel then is operated. But I, I would add that in all of this, the, the main thing that I think of that we need to be very careful of is the maintenance. To be clear, that we'll maintain those aspects of this channel that have been altered for these purposes, but that we're not somehow taking on the entire maintenance. And, and I'm not sure that that line will be very clear at all times. And, but the lawyers will need to try to make it clear as to what it is each side is maintaining.
But I realize that we are at some, some relatively preliminary steps with, with agreement, the agreement that does have a lot of words that can be interpreted and many, that are, that are left relatively undefined. And I, and I understand all of that. I bring it up now, because if we enter into this agreement for maintenance and repair under virtually all circumstances, we, during the rest of the drafting of the agreements and the operating negotiations, we are going to be held to that. So defining things is fine, but we need to be very clear that we are entering into an agreement to maintain and repair forever, and it doesn't have specific circumstances or schedules. So I'm in favor of going forward with this, but you have to, I, I'm glad to hear you share my concern. I know Mr. Armstrong is, is very acute as well in making sure that our, our backsides are, are covered. So I'm not asking for, for response, I'm just putting it all out there. And, and I know we all go into it with full faith and, and, and good, well, if, sure.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Farron.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Falcone, I'd just like to respond to a couple of things. And there, on, on situations like this, there are interagency trust that has to be relied upon. We have these agreements with other cities. The city of Santa Maria runs a six-mile bike path where they have the same provisions, where if by some chance our equipment damages something that was put in the way, then, then they would have to fix it. That hasn't happened yet. And we maintain the levee with a lot bigger machinery, with a more frequency than the bottom of this channel. The only thing that we've been doing lately in the bottom of this channel is graffiti abatement with a small pickup truck, which is going on today as we speak.
Thanks.
Which, by the way, we're also doing the areas under the city bridges, too. So I think the spirit of, of cooperation is there, and, and I can assure you that if we go down in the channel, we're not going to blindly go try to damage the fish passage or do anything. I also might mention that, in that this is a reinforced concrete design element into the channel, I'd like to see who would damage it with, with...
Well, if the earth moves, there are going to be some tweaks. But nothing that I said is a reflection on our relationship with the county and our working relationship that we hope to have going forward. Absolutely not. We are all going to go into this holding hands and singing kumbaya, and hopefully 25 or 30 years down the road, we will continue to be holding hands and singing kumbaya. It's just, my job is to protect the city, and so that's what I'm trying to do.
And I think your point of, of maintenance into perpetuity is, is well-taken. It's what we deal with on many of the channels, like this channel. We're maintaining it into perpetuity as well, so.
Great. Thank you so much for everything.
Well, and also, I want to add that we, we have worked together with the flood control district on many projects, and I've always, we've always had a good relationship. The most recent was the West Side Flood Control Project, and that was a huge project that we really had a good, good, good relationship with, and the people of the West Side are very pleased with it, so that's good. Okay, we need a motion. I just wanted to say, and I have to point this out, when I was in my twenties, and that was quite a while ago, my first time in City Hall was back in that corner, it was standing room only, and we were talking about Mission Creek. The Army Corps of Engineers wanted to make sure that there was concrete all the way from the ocean, all the way as, I don't know where, they wanted to go with it. And the people of Santa Barbara didn't want that. So we have come so far in absolutely having a wonderful creek and, and working with the flood control district, and now even getting the fish to come up so they can meet their cousins or whatever they are up in the, you know, up in the far reaches. So that's really, it's really a wonderful thing that we're doing, the right thing for us. Sometimes it takes many, many years, and I didn't have white hair then, so, but it's very good. But my little boy in the stroller is now 40 years old, so, oh, well, he just hit 40. But I think it's really wonderful what we're doing here, and we're doing the right thing, so congratulations, because it's, it's a difficult thing to try to do in a concrete channel, so I hope it works, and if it doesn't, we'll try something else. But thank you for doing this. Okay, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor, to approve the city administrator entering into a, an agreement with county flood control to modify the Caltrans channel and make it passable to steelhead trout.
Second.
There's a second? Okay, and there's a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay. We're going to have the annual water supply. Thank you so much, everybody who came. It's very wonderful. Annual water supply report in just a couple of minutes. I'll let you get set up, and we'll take a quick stretch here. Thank you.[1216.41]
It was just one of those things. Just one of those craziest flings. One of those bells that now and then rings. Just one of those things. It was just one of those nights. Just one of those fabulous flights. A trip to the moon on gossamer wings. Just one of those things. If we thought a bit of the end of it when we started painting the town, we'd have been aware that our love affair was too hot not to cool down. So goodbye, dear. Amen. Yes, hoping we meet now and then. It was great fun, but it's just one of those things. Yes, just one of those things. Mama, just one of those crazy slings. One of those bells that now and then rings. It's just one of those things. One of those nights. Just one of those fabulous flights. A trip to the moon on gossamer wings. Mama's just one of those things. If we thought a bit of the end of it when we started painting the town, we'd have been aware that our love affair was too hot not to cool down. So goodbye, dear. Amen. Yes, hoping we meet now and then. It was great fun, but it's just one of those things.
Kachuma is a U.S. Bureau of Reclamation project. It currently has a capacity of 188,000 acre feet. All of our west coast reservoirs are subject to siltation and do eventually lose some of their capacity. It's currently at 163 acre feet, which is about 87 feet of capacity.
Oops, Ms. Falcone, we only have four people here. You cannot leave. That's okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Ms. Bureau. Go ahead. Yeah. Well, they're going to go get them. Yeah, where are those men? Good for you.
Santa Barbara's allotment of the Kachuma project is 8277 acre feet per year, and it is our primary water supply. There is a pending water rights decision from the state board on how water from the project shall best be managed to meet all of the water needs, including habitat, downstream water. So that's still pending. Kachuma is a storage reservoir and is the con-- the levels in Kachuma start to decline, people get nervous, but it's important to remember it is a multi-year storage reservoir with about five years of storage. And the blue line on this graph represents the last 10 years of storage in Kachuma. And the red line is there to show how it looked during the severe drought of 1987 to 1993. And you can see it was drawn way down, and then fortunately, it rained. Gibraltar is the city's reservoir. It was constructed in 1920. As I think you're very aware, it was subject to fairly significant siltation this last year because of the burn in the area in the watershed and then subsequent runoff and debris flows. We lost about 20% of the capacity of that reservoir. Our current capacity is at 5,303 acre feet. It's still one of our most significant water supplies. Currently, we have about 62% of the capacity full, or about 3,300 acre feet. We-- the annual yield from Gibraltar depends a lot on how the rainfall happens and when it happens, but when-- in our planning, we plan between 4,000 and 5,000 acre feet of yield from Gibraltar. We are-- had historically initiated an agreement with other San Onofre water rights holders to allow us to have some storage capacity in Kachuma after loss of capacity in Gibraltar. We knew we would lose capacity in Gibraltar, but thought we'd have substantially more time than we do. And looking forward to that time, we had negotiated an agreement that would allow us to use sort of surplus storage space in Kachuma. We are now initiating discussions to allow that to happen. We have the agreement with the downstream water users. We just need to get the proper agreements and forms from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. And at your last meeting, you authorized us to go forward with that. Actually, I think it was previous to that, sorry. We have-- as I said, we have groundwater. We have two basins. They're hydrologically distinct. We have nine wells. We are not using our wells very much at this point in time. We tend to use them and use the storage basin in part for drought planning, so we'll have a drought supply in times of need. And we're also working to restore our groundwater treatment plant, which we need for running some of the wells. This map shows our groundwater locations, and you can see these are the foothill basin. These ones are online currently, and these ones are in Storage Unit Number One, and only a couple of those are being used at this point in time. We have an allotment of state water of 3,300 acre feet per year. That is how much-- basically, how much pipeline capacity and the maximum we can get from the state water on a 100% delivery year. This year, the estimates from the state water project are 15%, which is about 600 acre feet. Fortunately for us, this is a-- we're not in dire need of this supply at this point in time. It helps with the reliability of our supply, that we have so many different supplies. And we use this to help us plan for meeting periods of drought currently. So the fact that we're going to get a fairly small delivery this year doesn't have substantial concerns for us. But we will be taking the water that is available to us. Recycled water. We have about 800 acre feet of demand each year, which is about 5% of our total demand. And we are looking-- we're currently, as part of our long-term water supply planning effort, looking for opportunities to expand places where we can use-- reuse desal-- I mean recycled water, excuse me. One of the other issues that we're looking at with regard to recycled water is the water quality. It does tend to have a fairly high salts concentration. And we-- there are some treatment technologies that we could employ to make that water quality better, so we're evaluating those. And then, of course, we do have the desal plant, which is-- I like to think of it as an insurance policy for severe drought. It is in long-term storage. We've got a draft report on the date-- the time and cost to bring that back online. It's not finalized yet, but it's making some recommendations that I think will decrease our annual maintenance for the plant while still preserving it in the eventuality that we might sometime need it. We have a very robust water conservation plan, and we have many, many elements to that plan. And I would encourage people who are interested in more information about it to check our website. It's a very good website at sbwater.org. We coordinate with other water suppliers to have a regional plan. An important part of that plan is public information. We do numerous field trips and presentations. We run the city's website. And I think I really want to highlight the Garden Wise Guys program, which the water supply provides funding for. And it's really an excellent program that helps with water conservation, but really with sustainable landscape development in total. So it's really a great program. This year, we launched a rain sensor rebate program. We issued 75 rain sensor rebates, which is a lot for a brand-new program. It involves quite a lot of staff time going out to inspect to make sure they were installed and actually working. The 20-Gallon Challenge campaign has been quite successful. We updated the water conservation landscape design standards. Those are required now under the California Urban Water Conservation Council, but our standards exceed the basic requirements, and I think they're a great way to go forward in reducing future demand. And we are working on additional rebates and programs for water conservation, particularly targeted at landscaping. We have a Water Wise Landscape CD that should be coming out that helps people choose correct plants for their soil, plant location, and water type, you know, watering amount. And we're working to launch a landscape rebate program, which will provide people with rebates for changing out high-water-using plants and putting in the infrastructure to-- changing out actually the watering infrastructure and putting in the low-water-use nozzles and really putting in structures that will provide long-term and lasting reductions in our demand for irrigation. And we're also looking at water conservation opportunity assessment using specialized expert staff in some of our biggest water users. And we'll be back at your next meeting asking you to authorize acceptance of grants for some of these projects, which we're very pleased about. So I just wanted to touch basically on where we are with our current demand. When we were here the last two years, we were a little concerned because demand was creeping up and heading towards 15,000 acre feet. That seems to have been a response to having pretty ample water supplies, followed by a couple of dry years where people seem to just be used to using more water. We're seeing demand trending down again. We're at 14,300 acre feet per year on average right now, which is great. That's pretty much where we expect to be. As you can see, again, this is the per capita potable water use. We're at 137 acre feet per person, which is well below the state average of 160. And we are in the middle of a long-term water supply planning process update. And this is really how we look at our water supply for the next 20 years and making sure we have adequate supplies and we understand what they are and how we will use them to meet demand. And it's a very multi-effort approach. We're looking at our pass-through analysis and what we expect to get for yield from that. We're going to update the water demand factor, which is how much we expect each type of home residence to use. Different sizes of homes have different water demand factors. Businesses have different demand factors. And we believe we have made some sufficient changes to practices that those factors may need to be revised. We're looking at-- doing a really thorough evaluation of water conservation, our recycled water plan, and where we can increase that-- excuse me-- state water reliability and evaluating what effects climate change may have on our demand particularly. We are completing the desal rehabilitation study so we can understand what-- exactly what role that may play in our future planning. Looking-- we will be looking at our groundwater to see how we can best manage that groundwater to make sure it's reliable, but also provides a good supply of water. And we are always moving forward with additional water conservation measures and seeing where we can get additional conservation. All of those efforts will be put together with the general plan process, and we will come out-- they will be evaluated as part of the Plan Santa Barbara EIR, and then we will update our long-term water supply plan. Some of the other future issues that we're working on include-- as you know, the state's in a drought. In addition to the state being in a drought, there are endangered species issues, the Delta smelt and salmonid issues in the Delta that are affecting the state's ability to get water from the Delta and severely restricting deliveries in some cases. Fortunately, again, we're not that dependent on that supply, but it is a major issue for water purveyors in the state. And then, climate change. It appears very much as if climate change will affect the way water is managed in the state, particularly as much of the snowpack is one of our best reservoirs. And projections for climate change is that more of the precipitation will come as rain and that we will have less snow, so there will be less storage of water in the state. As I mentioned earlier, there is a pending state water rights hearing on Kachuma to evaluate how to operate that water reservoir in a way that is protective of downstream habitat while at the same time meeting needs for water supply for domestic and residential and irrigation purposes. We're working with Plan Santa Barbara to provide information for the environmental document, and then, of course, we'll be updating the long-term water supply plan. So in general, I just wanted to say it's important for us to do these analyses so that we'll have a good and factual basis for understanding our planning for the next 20 years. The statewide drought is continuing, but fortunately, our reservoirs still remain fairly full. And we will be requesting council approval of the Annual Water Supply Manager Report if you-- after you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Go ahead, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question about the status of the desal study, where it's at.
We received a draft report and provided comments back. There were a couple of things that weren't quite clear that needed to be finalized, and we should have that report probably within-- definitely within the next month, but hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Well, first of all, I wanted to say that I'm really thrilled and can't wait for the Smart Landscape Rebate Program. And I like the name. It's much more-- much less crude than cash for grass. I agree. And-- but I wanted to ask in particular about one of my least favorite subjects, which is state water. I did not support state water as a teenager. And I-- I think it was probably not the right way to go, but I'm trying to also think of how we could maximize that now that that ship has sailed for the benefit. And as you know, I consider one of the worst things that we could do is restarting up the desal plant. And I really feel like we don't have an adequate mid-- answer for a middle-level emergency. To me, it should be our last resort, so we need to build in some other alternatives. And I've had extensive conversations with Carpinteria and the-- or the Carpinteria Water District and with other folks about groundwater storage elsewhere in the state. And if we're only expecting to get, what, about 500 acre feet of our 3,300 acre feet allotment of state water, thereabouts--
Next year.
For next year?
Yeah.
I kind of wonder, shouldn't we try to build in-- pack in away 400 acre feet or so a year into groundwater storage elsewhere in the state and use that in event of a drought?
Yeah. Mayor Bloom, Councilwoman-- Ms. Williams, excuse me. It's a very good question, and that is one of the things we really will be looking at in terms of managing the long-term water supply. We can't really increase our amount of state water, but we can increase the reliability by doing some of the things you talked about, either banking it in the Central Valley, which is south of the Delta at times when there's adequate flow. We can put it in storage in water banks in the Central Valley in Kern County, well-established, well-understood water banks that have been operating for years. The issue there is really making sure that the cost to the city is adequate. And there are some new banks-- the scarcity of water is becoming such that people are interested in having payment in water rather than payment in cash. So I think there's some real opportunities for us there. Additionally, I think that there may be opportunities within Santa Barbara County for water banking. Santa Maria has a huge groundwater basin, and it has recently been adjudicated. So there's a good understanding of ownership there, which is one of the things necessary for having a water banking program. You don't want to put water in someone's aquifer and have somebody else say, "I'm using it." So that's a place that we can look in the future. Those are things we're going to be looking at. Even in Santa Barbara's own relatively small groundwater aquifers, we have opportunities for doing what we call conjunctive use. When we have surplus water, putting it into the basins, and when we are in periods of shortage, pulling it out of the basins. And we are going to be-- when I indicated we're going to be looking at our groundwater issues, we're going to be looking at opportunities to do better conjunctive use of groundwater locally as well. And then, talking regionally, there may be opportunities regionally on the south coast to work with our neighbors to develop reliability-type approaches that we can all work jointly. And we're just-- as managers have just started talking about, well, we really need to be talking about that. So we are looking at all those things. And I think that the state water project, that really-- rather than supply, being able to develop some sort of buffer for drought and reliability of supplies by doing some creative things like banking is where the opportunity will lay.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Schneider.
Could you give me more of a timeline about the Smart Landscape Rebate Program and how people might-- if they're interested in it, how they can learn more about it and when you're planning to roll that out?
I'm actually going to defer to Bill Ferguson, who's our Water Resources Supervisor, to answer that.
Mr. Ferguson.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Schneider. That's likely to kick off as a pilot-scale program toward the middle of this calendar year. That's what we expect at this point. Rebecca mentioned that we've got a funding opportunity to accept from the Bureau of Reclamation, I believe it is, to help fund the pilot part of that program. And that'll help guide how we develop the project further. And as we do further study of the conservation plan as a part of our long-term supply analysis, we'll integrate that into it as well and build the program from there. So first shot at that is probably mid of this-- midpoint of this year.
Great. It's exciting. And just to be clear, this is going through the Water Department, so there's not general fund monies in here. I think every time we're talking about new programs or things like that or, you know, things in process, we need to be very clear about where those funds are coming from and--
Well, and we'd like to be very clear that we're very excited because it's actually federal grant money that is coming, so that's even better.
Right. And through our Water Department, so. And I assume then the Garden Wise Guys can be out there and promoting it as well, which would be a really fun way to get the word out.
Yes, that's another program that's very popular. It has some funding challenges now, too. It's partly grant-supported, so we're looking for a way to maintain that and keep it out there and keep the episodes under development.
Great. Well, thank you, and thank you for the report. Usually, it's raining outside when we have these reports, but not today. It's absolutely gorgeous out. I'll move to approve and adopt the Annual Santa Barbara Water Supply Manager--
I second that. Moved and seconded, but Ms. Falcone, did you have something?
Just briefly, the mention of state water and banking it, which, you know, is a great idea. But the-- I'm the liaison-- or no, I sit on the Board of Directors of the CCWA, California-- help me out-- Water Authority-- Central Coast Water Authority. And that is the entity that deals with the state water, at least for our region. And I'm under the impression-- this may have changed, but I'm under the impression that although we have not taken our full allotment of state water forever, maybe, we-- it's still allocated to us in full, but it passes through-- the bulk of it passes through to Montecito. Is Montecito still buying our excess? We take about a quarter of what our allotment is, and then the rest passes through to them. So that would involve a full conversation with Montecito if that is still the case. And I remember during the Coast Village-- And I remember during the Coast Village Road, that development project that came through that I voted against, but one of the complaints that we heard from Montecito Water District was that they are out of water and that increased development on Coast Village Road is beyond their capacity. So could you talk a little bit about the interface between us and our neighbor?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, it is correct that we have not had demand for state water, and since it is, the transportation costs of that are charged when we take deliveries of it, we don't take deliveries of it if we don't need them. So we only order what we need, and in the past, we've only ordered about 1,000 acre feet per year. The excess, if there is excess, is still our entitlement, and we try and work very closely with the CCWA so that we can plan to meet our needs, but also to help our neighboring communities meet their needs if there's water in surplus. However, that is done on a year-to-year, and there are no future commitments to those agencies, and they do not count on them in their planning.
They do not count, so Montecito does not count on the pass-through that they've been getting historically, basically.
It is basically water bought on the spot market is essentially how.
Okay. That's good. Now, I'm not saying not to do storage. I think, you know, yes, that's something we absolutely need to do, and I do agree that the desal plant should be an avenue of last resort, but the fact that we have it, I mean, it would be lunacy to, you know, have it dismantled and go away entirely. But, that being said, we do need to really think about the drought that is going to happen mostly because the delta's falling apart. The delta is the biggest water issue in three states, and that is where we really need to make sure that we keep our eye on that ball. And so alternatives, like what Mr. Williams was suggesting, and I know it's done all over the state, is something that I think we do need to build into this long-term water plan. And if Montecito or any other, I mean, it still retains, we still retain the right to draw it all down, our entire allocation. It's our right to draw it all if we want it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to, you know, put some of that out there, because we do have, you know, other considerations in terms of, I mean, it'll still be a battle royale with Montecito, though, because they're used to it.
Okay. We have a motion and second, but Mr. House, do you have something?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, vis-à-vis our relationship with Montecito, I thought I understood that our staff was sharing with them how we've been so successful in our water conservation, and also we're connecting in with our sensors and all for the irrigation part of it. Would you fill me in a little bit more on that?
Ms. Bureau.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, our water conservation staff on the south coast all work very collaboratively together. And in fact, the website I talked about, sbwater.org, is actually hosted by the Santa Barbara County Water Agency, which is a special district of the Santa Barbara County. And one of their primary roles is water conservation. I think Santa Barbara, City of Santa Barbara, has played a really important role in developing such an excellent water conservation program, and so we do work very collaboratively with the other districts as needed to help them develop materials.
Okay, that's really great. And when you look at the chart that you show us and the response to the drought in the early '90s and how remarkably our constituents, our neighbors, all of us participated in conserving water, and it really made a difference, and it continues to. So part of what I was sort of missing in here, but I think it's sort of put together with the website that you're talking about, sbwater.org?
Yes.
Is the education. Remember how the kids would go home with their little, all their information, the teachers were all into it, and they would actually be educating their families? And it just became like part of our lifestyle. And so the question I think that comes down to is what do normal, everyday folks do and conserve is like number one, I guess. The city uses our purple pipe, the recycled water, but I also didn't see gray water mentioned, which is another piece of what individuals can do in their household. So maybe talk to me a little bit about the educational piece and then gray water, and then I really do support this, and I will vote for this.
Thank you. This slide shows one of the tours we take, actually, and this is at the wastewater treatment plant, if you can tell by the children in the front. And we tour that plant. Of course, that's an important part of the water cycle and also part of our recycled water production. We do do hundreds of presentations to schoolchildren each year, and we have staff dedicated to that, as well as participating with summer camps and having a water conservation message in summer camps that are sponsored by the city. So we do a huge amount of outreach to children. We also do a lot of outreach to other members, other parts of the public through our advertising campaigns and through things. We have a video award program where we get high school students to submit videos, and they're really great. They're really. And the winning video gets played, gets on city TV each year. It's really fun. I think this year it was one where this little kid was carrying around a couple gallons of water and showing how far two gallons of water can go. So it's a really great program, and there's some really creative things that we do. And so we are really still pushing that water conservation message. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Ferguson if I'm missing anything. Oh, gray water, sorry. We are working very closely with our building department. Unfortunately, the state building code for gray water systems is rather restrictive. It really is. It doesn't promote the easy issuance of gray water permits. And so we are looking for opportunities to make it, to work within the code, but to take away unnecessary barriers. So we're working with building department on that, and that's another of the issues that we will be bringing back to you on the 27th to ask for some opportunities to try and make that a little bit easier as well.
Thank you very much, and thanks for keeping up with the effort with the kids. I just think that's a key to success at all levels. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And usually, the kids really get it, because I've been in classrooms where they, you know, I say, "Well, I probably should teach you a little bit about the water," and then the teachers, this was up at Cleveland, and the teachers say, "Well, look behind you." And there on a big bulletin board, they had the whole watershed and everything. They'd been studying this. You know, it's very wonderful what they know and what they can do. Okay, thank you. And we have a motion and second. Mr. Williams, did you have one of those?
Sure. I just wanted to address the Montecito issue.
Okay, good.
With one issue. The Montecito's very aware of the fact that it has had limited water supplies, and that's one of the reasons, I think, actually, the driving, number-one reason, that they've switched to a more progressive rate structure within the last year. And so it's hard, you know, for us without them recalculating everything and seeing what water usage is in this last year to really know what kind of situation Montecito is in, because after adopting a more progressive rate structure, one that tends to increase conservation more, it may change a lot of their calculations.
Be interesting to see. That's good. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and second to accept this report. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thanks for all your good work. We have some, I'm gonna let you read the closed session titles, but I did want to mention that we have received a national honor today from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and it's really wonderful. They recognize Santa Barbara as one of America's dozen distinctive destinations for 2009. And what that means is it's presented to cities, I'm reading from this plaque that we got, it's a very nice plaque. I don't want to put your eyes out with it because it's very shiny, but it's presented to cities across the country that offer authentic visitor experience by combining a dynamic downtown, cultural diversity, attractive architecture, cultural landscapes, and a strong commitment to historic preservation and revitalization, and it's all right here. So that's good. And so we're gonna put this in a good place. I don't quite know where yet. Maybe as we come into City Hall or something like that, we'll figure out a place. But I did want to thank the National Trust for Historic Preservation, also our local one over at the Presidio did this today for us, so that's very nice. Okay, can you go ahead and read the, and most of us were there, so I wanted to thank the council members who were able to get there from their, to their, with their calendars. I know how busy you all are. Okay, go ahead and read the next items.
Item number 20, conference with labor negotiator, and items 21, 22, and 23, conference with legal counsel, pending litigation.
Okay. And we will adjourn on that, and we will be back in two weeks because next Monday is Martin Luther King Birthday, whom we will celebrate. So thank you very much.